Welcome to the City Council's December 8th regular City Council meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor members of the City Council, and echoing the welcome to the December 8th regular City Council meeting. At this time, we do ask that the City Council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, controlling your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as answer any of your questions. For members of the public who wish to speak on an item, after the mayor calls for public comment, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll then have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at that time. Also, would like to direct everyone's attention to the handout. We have the agenda, which includes all presentations and any web form public comment received, as well as edits to the November 10th and November 17 minutes. And that concludes my introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general direction. Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, so for general public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. This will be the final call for general public comment, item C. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda, item D, presentations and proclamations. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on item D1, which is the proclamation recognizing our state Senator Jerry Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And if I may, can he take a public comment on all three presentations and proclamations at one time?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D1, proclamation for State Senator Jerry Hill, D2, the presentation on Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, or D3, proclamation recognizing Henry Pemberton, Oregon, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. Have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. So, final call for public comment on presentations and proclamations, D1, 2, and 3. Seeing none, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The first proclamation is recognizing State Senator Jerry Hill. Whereas the tenure of the Honorable Jerry Hill with the California State Senate is drawn to a close following 12 years of dedicated service in the California State Legislature and nearly 30 years in public service. And whereas Senator Hill was first elected to the California State Senate in 2012 as the representative of the 13th Senatorial District after having served as a representative of the 19th Assembly District from 2008 to 2012, as well as serving as a member of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors from 1998 to 2008, and of the San Mateo City Council from 1991 to 1998. And whereas over his 12 years of service in the California State Legislature and on numerous committees and commissions, Senator Hill's legislative accomplishments include more than 150 bills and resolutions that addressed a vast array of issues important to the government agencies, businesses, and residents in the district. And whereas the legislation championed, authored, and organized by Senator Hill, which focused on consumer safety and protection, education, coastal access, government accountability, public utilities, transparency in law enforcement, among many other issues, reflect his deep compassion for and commitment to the safety, well-being, and quality of life of his constituency. And whereas through his tireless commitment to public service, Senator Hill leaves an enduring legacy on the city of Menlo Park, the County of San Mateo, and the state of California. Now therefore it be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the city of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby honor and pay tribute to State Senator Jerry Hill, and thank him for his many years of public service, and wish him happiness and success in his future endeavors.
And Mayor Taylor, Senator Hill was going to attend to accept proclamation, however, do not believe he was able to make it, but we will ensure that he will receive a hard copy.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. To introduce this item is our Transportation Demand Management Coordinator Nikki.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Perfect. So, real quick, Judy, should I present, or did you want to present or use the, share your screen?
Hi, Nick. I'll go ahead and display if you don't mind just cueing me, and I will tap through the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Judy. Good evening, council members. Mayor Taylor, my name is Nicholas Yee, the city's demand, Transportation Demand Management Coordinator, and tonight I'll be coming to you on behalf of the Safe Out of School Program, just highlighting and recapping Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, which happened in the city on November 18th. Next. So, I'll give a brief introduction tonight to Ruby Bridges Day, share some participation statistics that we had, and some community submitted photos. Next. So, as a brief introduction, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day celebrates the brave Ruby Bridges. So she basically was kind of, or became the youngest icon of the civil rights movement at the age of six. So, back in 1960, she helped to integrate schools in New Orleans, Louisiana. Next. So to give a little background, the significance of what Ruby Bridges did, we have to go back to 1954. So, in 1954, the Supreme Court ruled on the case Brown v. Board of Education, which basically struck down racial segregation in schools as being unconstitutional. However, in many parts of the country, especially in the South, many schools delayed integration, such as schools in New Orleans, Louisiana. So until a mandate was created in 1960, all schools in New Orleans continued to be segregated. So with the mandate, they chose six African-American students to clean bridges to integrate two schools. So there were two schools, each having a group of three students each. So on November 14th, 1960, these six students were meant to integrate the schools. However, one group of students integrated the school together, however, Ruby Bridges was the only student of her group to integrate William France Elementary School. And on that day, she was escorted by federal marshals on her walk to school because of all the vitriol and hate that was spewed by all the residents that were against integrating the schools. Next. So the purpose of Ruby Bridges Day is that it's come to symbolize the fight it took to gain equality, integration, and community, and also the independence of children that comes through walking. So kind of in the local context, it all started a couple of years ago in 2018 with Marching Elementary School in South San Francisco. So there was a fifth grade class led by Ms. Carlino that helped celebrate Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day, and then it essentially began the countywide movements, gained the attention of the San Mateo County Office of Education and the Board of Education. So in 2019, they actually created a proclamation to declare November 14th to be henceforth known as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the county. And with last year's events and this year's, now we have the first and second annual events that's happened, and hopefully this is going to be a continued annual event. Next. So back in 2019, on November 14th, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day was actually celebrated here in Menlo Park by students from Beechwood and Bellhaven Schools, and Mayor Taylor helped lead some of the efforts there. And here's a couple of pictures of the events from last year. Next. So it took a whole community to help make this event possible, so just wanted to recap some of the partners that helped make this event possible last year. So there was the Boys and Girls Club of the Peninsula, Cafe Zoe, the City County Association of Governments of San Mateo County, which is also known as CCAG, Mayor Cecilia Taylor, Parents for Safe Out, and their former Chair Jen Wallison, Safe Kids Santa Clara San Mateo, and the San Mateo County Office of Education Safe Out School Program, and Sanford Children's Health Program. Next. So building on those efforts, the Menlo Park Safe Out School Program and the coordinator tried to work with schools to promote Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, which is occurring this year on November 18th. Essentially, we wanted to highlight the event because it offers many valuable lessons for students on both quality and also walking and healthy lifestyles. And again, our coordinator helps the efforts with coordinating all the schools, but it actually took a lot of community effort. So there's many thanks to the school administrators, teachers, parents, that all helped coordinate locally each school. So big kudos to all those out there to help make this event possible. So we also had a tally of the events, so people participated. So we don't know how many necessarily participated, but we have confirmed participation this year from seven schools. So we have participation from Enseno, La Trata, Las Lomitas, Laurel School, Menlo Atherton, Opelmo, and Tide Academy. So hopefully, building on this momentum, as we go towards the third annual event next year and so forth, we want to make Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day an annually celebrated event in Menlo Park at all schools, both in the classroom and on the streets. Next. So just kind of running down the numbers, as I mentioned before, we have seven confirmed schools with 180 students participating in total. So if you want to do the breakdown of all those students and schools, that was essentially 32 different classes comprising different grades from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and ninth grades. So we did walking to school in the sense that, you know, not everyone was actually in school, so there's both in-person learning and also distance learning. So the whole goal was just to get kids, you know, out of the distance learning classrooms to just get out and kind of walk if they weren't actually going to school. So walking to school, we had 134 total students of that, 94 were actually in-person learning, and then 40 were doing distance learning. And then it's technically Walk to School Day, but we kind of expanded to be also Walk and Roll to School Day, so rolling includes, you know, skateboarding, biking, any kind of mobility device with wheels. So for roll in the school, we had 46 students, 30 of which were in-person learning, and 16 which were distance learning. And next. So here are some pictures we had submitted to us from the community. So the first couple of slides we have are from Laurel School. This is Ms. Montoya's third grade class, so her class did an interactive lesson and made posters. So they highlighted Ruby Bridges Day and kind of capitalized on the Black Lives Matter movements. So as you can see in some of the pictures, there's a lot of both elements here in these posters. And next. And then some additional pictures from the classroom. And next. And then we also had community submitted pictures. We just basically encouraged people to take selfies while they're out there, while being socially distanced and taking safety protocols. So we really stepped up and actually showed their spirit out there despite all the conditions. So, you know, really made me smile to see all these pictures of kids getting out there and just, you know, trying to lift some sense of normalcy. And next. And then some more pictures here. And next. Yeah, I'm sorry, for one of these pictures, this is just how it was submitted, I wasn't able to, it's not like we put the hashtag over this child's face. And next. And that's it. So if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Thank you, Nick, for the presentation. I really appreciate the, by the numbers, and I'm glad you put in the walk and roll, because I think annually, there's a walk and roll sometime around October or September that unfortunately didn't happen this year, so it was nice that you were able to combine it. So thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Were there any other follow-up questions or comments from council? All right, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the next.
I apologize for the interruption, but Senator Hill was able to join us. If I could, I would like to give you an opportunity to accept the proclamation that you have already read. Senator Hill, I promoted you to panelists, you're able to engage your webcam and microphone at this time. A bit earlier in the meeting, our mayor did read the proclamation, but we would like to give you the opportunity now to accept.
Good evening, Senator Hill.
Senator Hill, you should see an icon, oh, it looks like we are able to hear you. Perfect.
Working. Is it?
Yes, we are able to hear you now. Thank you.
And I apologize, I used the link and couldn't get in. I did hear and I saw the proclamation earlier, and I heard you reading it, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to thank you for that, and I'm sitting here saying, "I'm here, I'm here, I'm here," as you said, I was going to be there. So I, I'm grateful for the, certainly the city of Menlo Park is, is one of my favorite cities in the, in the peninsula, and you've just always done it right. And, and so I appreciate the recognition tonight, and thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and council members. It's, it's great, it's like family to be here with you, and, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Hill. And Councilmember Mueller has something to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to express, Senator Hill, how much you've meant to the city of Menlo Park, and your availability to council members is unparalleled. And we can, we can call you, we'd see you, you're always, you're everywhere present. And I just want to share with those watching this evening, some of the history, Senator Hill's history. It's, it's when Senator Hill, Senator Hill was a council member in San Mateo, and he was so well-respected that when he first ran for the Board of Supervisors, the first time, he was unopposed, no one ran against him. And, and then obviously served, you know, incredibly as our state senator, battling PG&E, the behemoth PG&E, working on tough issues like license plate readers. But what I, what really struck me this year was, in this last senate race, I actually, I walked districts, and it was involved in that race. And when I rang a doorbell and someone answered the door, if I said, "Senator Hill's endorsed this person," they'd go, "That's all I need to know. That's all I need to know." He was so thought of and well, and well-respected, and just was always such a problem solver with our city. So we're really going to miss you, Jerry.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Ray.
Senator Hill, Councilmember Carlton also wants to address you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Carlton? We're unable to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, sorry. Lovely technical glitches here. I wanted to thank Jerry Hill so much. I can't believe I've known you 12 years. That's just amazing to me. And so much that you do, you have the best ideas for bills on the state level. I really enjoyed working with you, supporting a lot of the bills that you've done. And I don't think people also realize how much incredible support you've given to the community choice aggregators, so that we can have clean energy in the state. And you've gone above and beyond on so many things. And I always appreciate your support, and I hope you're not a stranger. I hope you continue to do great things for our community.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Hill, for being able to accept this proclamation. Personally, I appreciate it, and I look forward to speaking with you in the future. I'm sure you will still be around.
Yes, I will be, and I would look forward to that, Madam Mayor. And if I could just indulge you for one minute, I, while I'm here, I know this is Councilmember Carlton's last meeting, and I wanted to just say, just, just to share with you how, how sorry I am that she's, she's leaving, and just to tell you what an outstanding council member she's been. And we actually started in the same way. She was the president of her Neighborhood Homeowners Association, as I was the president of mine. I think we have to start that way to get going, but, but I can't tell you enough of how powerful she has been. And as, you know, as she's worked her way through and in, in the different roles within the city of Menlo Park. But when I would deal with her, when she was in, in her role before that, and she would come to Sacramento and advocate on legislation, it wasn't just an easy approach, and it wasn't just someone saying, "Yeah, we'd like you to do this." It was, "Yeah, what are you going to do to help us make this happen for the betterment of these people in California?" She's not, definitely has never been someone who, who is easy to just kind of shine off and, and not really work with to solve the problem. And that's the power of her leadership. And I just wanted to share those thoughts, because I've been, enjoyed so much working with her over the years, and, and enjoyed just the camaraderie and the relationship, but it's the issues that she focuses on, the community issues, and it's the grassroots efforts and the way to get things done. And she did that in Menlo Park, and I'm so appreciative for that, and I just wish, wish you all the, all the best, Catherine.
Thank you. That means so much to me. I cannot begin to express to you how much that means to me. Thank you so much. And we can get together after all this and have a glass of wine.
After all this, that's for sure. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for indulging me, and I apologize for that little technical glitch early on in that. So thank you, and appreciate it. Appreciate the proclamation.
You're very welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next proclamation, which is recognizing Henry Pemberton, Oregon. Whereas the longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community which benefits from the wisdom, knowledge, and experience that this individual brings to all. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon was born in Marshall, Texas in 1930, his educator parents, Henry and Norella Pemberton, were the first graduates of Wiley College in 1889, the first and only HBU in the area at that time. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon attended Bishop College in Marshall, Texas in the early 50s, and has spent his entire life as an educator and civil rights advocate, excuse me, activist. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon lives in Menlo Park, not far from Stanford University, where he worked for decades as a Development Director for the university's foundation to provide support and scholarships for minority students. And whereas supporting social justice and equal rights, Henry Pemberton, Oregon has been retired for years, but still gets up early morning and puts in a full day working on committees that seek to overturn the death penalty in California. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon also serves on the Board of Directors for Girls to Women, a charitable nonprofit in East Palo Alto area which assists minority low-income girls with their education. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon is very involved in its church community and has served many local charities over the years. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon lives independently and zooms regularly with his nieces and many nephews. And whereas Henry Pemberton, Oregon will be 90 years old, or was 90 years old on December 4th, 2020, he has been an active, community-involved resident of Menlo Park for more than 40 years, and the conscious of the Stanford, of Stanford, and the respected among the Stanford University faculty community. Now for, therefore it be proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the city of Menlo Park, do hereby recognize and gratefully acknowledge Henry Pemberton, Oregon on his 90th birthday. May happiness, good health, and much joy follow you in the years to come. Right. And moving on to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Calendar, item E. Under the Consent Calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council Member, City Staff Member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continue to a later date. And at this time, I'll go ahead and take public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment for this?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our Consent Calendar, items E1 through E5, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. So this will be the final call for any public comment on the Consent Calendar, items E1 through E5. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar? Ms. Heron?
I did see two hands.
I'm not moving. I wanted, I wanted to pull something, just from it.
Okay. Which item?
E4, and it doesn't mean to be a long discussion. I was just going to bring it to your attention that I've discussed it with Starla, our City Manager, and with Jen Pepper, who's Executive Director of Peninsula Clean Energy. And they are interested, and we are beginning discussions on doing an agreement with Peninsula Clean Energy for solar power that may come, that may be available as we take this down. And they will be discussing that further. I don't want to speak out of turn before agreements and things have been discussed, but I just wanted to put that on your, on your radar, that Peninsula Clean Energy is, is going to be reaching out to work with us so that they can partner with us on, on the solar power for the community center in Bellhaven. And I also made the suggestion, since we have the panels, and there was discussion about what to do with them, because they're slightly out of, out of date, and do we donate them to a nonprofit or whatever? And I suggested that we put them on Little House. We own the building, and we rent it, I think, for like a dollar a year or something to the nonprofit that's using it. And that way, we're donating for the benefit of a nonprofit, but it's going on one of our city government buildings. And we're not going to deal with that tonight. I was just going to put that forward as a suggestion of how to benefit the community further with the somewhat aged solar panels that come off of that building. So nothing really to vote on or discuss further, I was just going to put that forward to keep on your radar in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And Councilmember Mueller, did you have your hand raised for the Consent Calendar, or were you making a motion?
I was making a motion.
So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller. I have a second by City Councilmember Carlton to approve the Consent Calendar. Any future, or any more City Council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call votes, City Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Public Hearing, item F. The public hearings are formal, are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. We will now conduct a hearing under Proposition 218. Under our procedures to be counted, all protests must be in writing and submitted to the city clerk before the conclusion of the public hearing. Item F1 is conduct a rate, a rate protest hearing and adopt Resolution Number 66- Item F1 is conduct a rate protest hearing and adopt Resolution Number 6603 to increase solid waste rates for 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025, and encumber up to 1.5 million in solid waste funds to smooth customer rate increases over the five-year period. To introduce this item is our Sustainability Manager, Rebecca Lucky.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Rebecca Lucky, Sustainability Manager. Let's give me a moment here to show my screen. Are you able to see it right now?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to have a very short presentation, and so that you're able to get right to the discussion and hear any protests that there may be regarding the garbage rate increases proposed for adoption tonight. And so, the recommendation is to conduct the Proposition 218 hearing. And if there is not a majority of protest, the staff recommendation is to adopt the garbage rate increases for the calendar years 2021 through 2025. And additionally, to earmark 1.5 million from the solid waste fund balance to smooth customer rate increases. And this would essentially reduce the noticed rate increase of $9 per month for small cart customers that was sent out in October to 550 per month. And just to give a little bit of a background to you, the council has reviewed the solid waste rates in August, October, and November. And so, that's why we have also a shortened up presentation for tonight. So, the Proposition 218 protest, so in October, 20,863 notices were sent in October to property owners. And as a matter of law, if a majority of property owners protest the rate increases, the city council cannot increase rates. So, that means at least 10,432 property owners would need to protest the rates in order for council not to be able to make a decision on rate increases for customers. The city would have to find another way to pay for the compensation, and that would be another discussion. So, to date, we've received, I had counted 28, but as of 5:00 PM, I've counted 32 protests that have been received, and they can continue to be received until the public hearing is closed. And when I reviewed the majority of the protest comments, there, most of the comments centered around about five areas. And there was a lot of opposition or protest to small cart increases and the impact that will have on reducing the incentive to reduce recycle and compost. And there was also some request that large cart customers' rates should be increased more as they generate more waste. And in the staff report, it is identified that the rate increases are, for small cart customers, are really to come into compliance with legislation under the Prop 218, that we need to recover full cost of service. And so, there is still, larger cart customers still pay more, and small cart customers will still pay less throughout all of the years. And then there were requests for a tiered rate system based on waste generated. So, the more you throw away, the more cost you pay. That system will still be in place for each of the years. So, for example, in 2025, there will still be a $42 difference for a customer that has a 20-gallon cart versus a customer that has a large 96-gallon cart. And then there were requests to not increase the rates for financially constrained customers. And that is being addressed in the next agenda item by the City Council for decision to keep rates the same for 2021 for customers that may be financially constrained. So, that is being addressed tonight. And there was a lot of suggestions to reduce the frequency of pickups to save on cost, and this is a valid idea. In fact, I forgot to introduce Mr. Gar Schults, but I talked to him earlier today. And there have been many studies in the Bay Area about reducing frequency of pickups. They haven't really amounted to huge savings, and it does require all customers on the same route to have the same pickup schedule. And there are some health and sanitation issues that we would need to address, and we would need to renegotiate our contract with Recology as to changing the frequency of pickup. It's actually most viable probably for clean recyclables, where it doesn't have any organic material. But again, that is a long process, and we do need to adopt the rates going forward. And so, we would be, if we went down this path, we would be able to change them once we've changed the agreement, have done community engagement, whether all customers would like a different frequency of pickup. So, there's a bit more of a work stream that's involved with that option. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky, for the presentation. Are there any follow-up questions from the council before we take public comment? Councilmember Mueller?
Have we analyzed if there's like a place in the city that protests are coming from? Or is it all spread out? Or is it, you know, is it a, I'm very curious if there's anything there that would be something that we'd want to take notice of?
They are spread out over the city. There wasn't a consistent geographical area where it was coming from.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Okay, Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, at this time, if any member of the public would just participate in the opening of a public hearing regarding rate protest hearing and adoption of Resolution 6603 to increase solid waste rates from 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025, and encumber up to 1.5 million dollars in the solid waste fund to smooth customer rate increases over the next five-year period, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. And our first speaker will be Stephen Kermit. Stephen, if you would like to address the City Council, you may at this time.
Yes. First of all, I read in the mailing about the placement of a reduced rate schedule for people on limited income, and I'd like to see that happen because that's my situation. And I generate very little solid waste, and I put out the composting bin only every two weeks, and I put out the other bins much less frequently than that because I just don't generate much waste. So, the two-tier system seems completely unfair to me in terms of the amount of stuff that I put out, how frequently I put the cans out at all. They drive by without stopping most of the time. You know, they stop every other week to pick up the composting and rarely to pick up anything else. And it just seems to me that it needs to be many more, that the charges need to be much more proportional to the amount of stuff that's put out. So, that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. So, this will be the final call for public comment on Item F1, our public hearing. And seeing no further hands raised, Taylor may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And just to follow up with the public comment, Ms. Lucky, and this may be in the staff report, and I didn't see it in there, but just the idea, I don't know, Ms. Lucky, thank you. Just the idea of having your rates based on the proportion that you use. If you're only having your can picked up once a month, you still pay the same rate if somebody is having it picked up four times a month.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, I'm sorry, can you give me an example of, or just a quick question?
The example that the gentleman just used that called in about how much he uses the service and if the rates could be, if its rates would be based on his actual usage as opposed to there's a flat rate even if you don't use that amount of service.
Right, yeah. So, the rate is charged for once-a-week pickup for residential. And if a resident or a residential customer is not setting out, maybe they're setting it out every other week, there isn't any flexibility, the way the current franchise agreement is set up, to administer a program like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I sit on the SBWMA board, and we had the same idea. So, they hired a consultant, and they looked into the routes, and we did research into this because it's something that we wanted to do. And they found that the cost is kind of a fixed cost. It's the cost of the driver getting the truck, driving all the way from where they are to each neighborhood and going. The cost of actually picking up each individual one was tiny. Once the truck is driving down the street, and that's what Ms. Lucky was explaining, that you have to have pretty much everyone on the street or everyone in the whole area because it's the cost of getting the truck out there that is the primary driver. And so, then we said, "Well, fine, you know, can we get everyone less?" And they found that that was a problem with food and spoilage, and it became a health issue that the expert said was not something that we wanted to get into. Really, the only flexibility we had was in having the truck that does recycling do less recycling. And there was some concern brought up that if we have it picked up less with the same-size container, it actually starts disincentivizing people because the container starts getting more full. And if anything, we want to incentivize people to recycle more. And I've agonized over this. One of the things that irritated me enough to make me want to run for city council so many years ago was I was getting really angry that the price to pick up my trash went up every year. And so, this hits like my red button on, "God, I wish we didn't have to do this." And for those that don't know, call me. My number's published. I'll explain it in more detail. There were changes in the way China's taking recycling. There's some major, major changes in laws and things that have impacted this so that by no fault of anyone in our area, the costs have gone up significantly. And if we didn't have to raise this, I swear to you, I would not, I would vote against it because I hate doing this. But there are a number of major things that have happened that has caused the price to go up. And I hate it, but that's where we are. So, I wanted to explain that it is a great idea, and everyone on the board tried, and we were told that it was not really something that was going to make a difference in the price. So, I want to make sure that the person that asked that question felt respected. And as I said, if you want to discuss it further, you're welcome to give me a call.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the public hearing, and I will ask. Yes.
We did have a situation where the city, after a certain amount, can get fined if we put too many things in the recycle bin that are not recyclable. If we don't, if we overfill bins, there are things that people can do themselves that do help. It's not a huge amount, but there are things that people can do to make sure that it runs effectively and efficiently so that we don't end up having to take a further hit. But, yeah, I mean, I hate this. I really hate raising this, but as I explained, I don't know what else. I'm hoping in the near future, someone sees this opportunity to build a paper recycling place in California, which would be green or any way than taking our recycling and shipping it to the other side of the planet. I'm hoping that we have that developed in the near future for the people in this part of the country.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So, at this time, I will ask the city clerk to tabulate their written protest to determine whether there is a majority protest.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, at the close of this public hearing, we have received 32 protest letters. There are 20,863 properties, and a total number of 10,432 protests would be needed to uphold the rate protest. Therefore, the required number of protests were not received, and the City Council is free to adopt the rates as published. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So, it's now open for City Council discussion.
I think Councilmember Carlton did excellent jobs explaining it, so I don't really have any further comments myself.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I was actually going to also thank Councilmember Carlton for all her work on SBWMA, which I know has been significant, and then move that we adopt the new rates.
I hate to do it, but I guess you needed a second.
I'll second Councilmember Carlton if you don't want your name on it.
It doesn't matter. We're all going to, you know, we all vote as we vote.
So, we do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by City Councilmember Carlton to adopt Resolution Number 6603 to increase solid waste rates for 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025, and encumber up to 1.5 million dollars in solid waste on to smooth customer rate increases over the five-year period. Is there any further City Council questions or discussions? Seeing none by roll call votes, City Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first item is G1, Adopt Resolution 6605, authorizing implementation of a pilot program between January 1, 2021, and June 30, 2021, to provide financial relief on residents' solid waste and water bills and appropriate $164,000 from general fund. To introduce this item is our Sustainability Specialist, Joanna Chen.
Is everybody able to see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great, all right. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and City Council members. My name is Joanna Chen. I'm the Sustainability Specialist at the city. I'm here to present a pilot program for the Solid Waste and Water Rate Assistance Program. Staff is seeking council direction to adopt a resolution authorizing the implementation of a pilot program between January 1, 2021. Sorry, that's my screen. All right, having technical issues right now.
Joanna, would you like me to present, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. So Joanna, if you could just cue me through the slides and I can control it from my end. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and city council members. My name is Joanna Chen, I'm the sustainability specialist here at the city. I am presenting a pilot program for the solid waste water, solid waste and water rate assistance program. Next slide, please. So staff is seeking council direction to adopt a resolution authorizing the implementation of a pilot program between January 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2021. It's to provide a financial relief on residents' solid waste and water bills and to appropriate the $164,000 from the unassigned fund from the general fund. Next slide, please. So to provide some background information before diving into the proposed pilot program, I'd like to provide some background information on existing rate assistance programs. Next slide. Again, it's to provide a financial relief to help residents pay for the basic living expenses such as medical, housing, and utilities. Some examples of this is Medi-Cal, supplemental security income, LIKE, and the national school lunch program. On a more local level, there are some jurisdictions that do offer discount options for the utility services, which usually range from 10% to 50%. Next slide, please. The most common rate assistance program qualification is if someone in the household is enrolled in a public assistance program, or two, the household meets the program's income guidelines. And so some local examples of this is Cal Water, they have a low-income rate assistance program. It lists the PG&E care program as one of the eligible assistance programs, and it has its own household income guidelines to follow. Recology San Francisco and City of San Carlos, they only use the PG&E care program as enrollment qualification for their program. Next slide, please. And so to provide some background information about PG&E care program, it offers a monthly minimum of 20% discount on gas and electricity. Any PG&E customer is eligible for this program. Even if you're a renter, if a landlord bills the tenant or the applicant directly for gas and electricity, the applicant is considered as a submeter customer and they may still be eligible for the care program. The program qualification for this is if someone in the household participates in the public assistance program, or if the household income meets the care program guidelines, income guidelines. Next slide. Okay, and so now I'll talk about more about the proposed City of Menlo Park rate assistance program. Next slide. Within the past few months, city council has been introduced to the rate assistance concept. So on August 25th, city council provided direction to pursue a 20% discount program for the solid waste. On September 8th, city council expressed a support for a discount on the Menlo Park municipal water for water customers. On October 13th, city council approved the Proposition 218 mailing for solid waste rates inclusive of a $500,000 subsidy. And lastly, on November 17th, city council approved a five-year subsidy of $1.5 million. The $1.5 million is to help reduce rates for all solid waste customers in 2020, and the remaining $1 million is to help move rates for the 20-gallon and 32-gallon customers from 2022 to 2025. Next slide, please. Okay, this program creates great opportunities for residents who generally face financial hardships and those specifically affected by COVID-19. It helps them to, one, enroll in the PG&E care to receive discounts on their gas and electricity bills, and two, to receive discounts on their solid waste, which is managed by Recology, and on their water, which is managed by the Menlo Park municipal water bill. Staff anticipates about 975 households to participate in the city's program. Next slide, please. Okay, so staff proposes a pilot program for the next six months, starting on January 1st to June 30th, by using the PG&E care program as an enrollment qualification. The criteria to receive a solid waste and water discount would be, the resident would need to be enrolled in the care program and show verification, and two, to submit the most recent Recology and Menlo Park municipal water bill. Next slide, please. So I'll talk about the solid waste rate. So staff is proposing a 20% monthly discount, and this is comparable to the PG&E care program discount rate. The table below, it compares the 2020 solid waste rate to the 2021 proposed rate with no discount and with a 20% discount. So for instance, for the 32-gallon customer, the 2020 rate, they're currently paying for, they're currently paying $31. In the 2021 proposed rate with no discount, it would increase to about $37. If council approves the 20% discount, the amount will go down to $29. So the difference between the 2020 rate and the rate with a 20% discount is about $2 per month. Next slide, please. And then to summarize the solid waste discount, the total cost to the city is approximately $49,000. This does not include the administrative cost. Other San Francisco Bay Area communities do offer monthly solid waste rates ranging from 10% to 25%. For instance, City of San Carlos, they offer 10% discount. City of Emeryville, they offer 12.5% discount. Recology San Francisco offers 25% discount. Another option besides a percentage discount is to offer a fixed discount amount rate, like City of Santa Clara, they offer a $3 per month discount for their solid waste rate. Next slide, please. And now I'll talk about the water discount. So the water discount would only apply to qualified Menlo Park municipal water customers. Staff proposes a fixed monthly discount rate to be equivalent to 50% of the 5/8-inch meter service charge, and this is about $14. This rate is comparable to Cal Water's low-income rate as well. So staff proposes to start the water discount simultaneously with a solid waste discount on January 1st. So the total estimated cost to the city is approximately $82,500. And again, this does not include the administrative cost. Next slide, please. City council may also consider some alternative options. For instance, the first one would be a phased approach. And this would mean that the city would start the solid waste discount on January 1st and the water discount later on July 1st. This allows more time to consider some alternative approaches to implement the water discount. The second option that the council may consider is a one-time financial assistance. And so staff is suggesting an amount between $48 to $60, which is approximately $8 to $10 discount a month. This provides a more financial relief to residents as opposed to a monthly discount. And the last option is to forego a rate assistance program entirely. Next slide, please. To summarize all of the three program options, again, it's to serve, staff estimate that the program will serve about 975 qualified households for the next six months. And so option one is the solid waste and water pilot program. So these two discounts will start at the same time, January 1st to July, January 1st to June 30th. So the estimated cost would be $164,000. The second option is the phased approach. Again, that would be the solid waste discount starting in January, and then the water would start in July. So the cost to the city would be about $82,000. The last option that I presented was a one-time financial relief, and that is a suggested amount of $48 to $60 amount a month, and the total cost would be about $79,000 to $91,000. Next slide, please. Okay, and then to conclude this presentation, staff recommends adopting the Resolution Number 6605, authorizing the implementation of a pilot program between January 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2021, is to provide a financial relief on the residents' solid waste and water bills. Again, the solid waste discount would be 20% of the 2021 proposed rate, and then the water discount would be a monthly of a 50% of the 5/8-inch meter service charge. And the last recommendation would be to appropriate the $164,000 from unassigned fund from the general fund. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. We have a clarifying question from Councilmember Carlton.
Hi, would you mind going back one slide, please? Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. I have a question, though. The water discount, is that, that's a $14 per qualifying household?
Correct.
Or is that a percentage?
That is a dollar amount, that's a fixed dollar amount.
That's wonderful, because I'd spoken to someone from Cal Water, and the concern is that when you do it by percentage, it doesn't encourage people to save water, but the set dollar amount and how you arrived at that is great. Thank you.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Quick question, that's, when you said that the discount for the water discount, the municipal and Cal Water was comparable, were you talking about the discount is comparable or the rate is comparable?
So what I say is comparable is Cal Water's discount program is the same as the 50% of the 5/8-inch meter service charge. So they use that same formula for their discount program.
Is it comparable?
That I would need to check. But I can get to, yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes, I guess this question is a little analogous to the question about the water discount. With regards to the solid waste, was there any discussion of limiting the sort of applicability of these discounts to like sort of the smaller containers? And again, whether sort of we want to be as a policy matter? Again, I appreciate that people have different scenarios, but like discounting people who are using the largest container?
I--
Is the question, maybe I was confusing, I apologize.
No, it wasn't confusing, I was trying to think of a way to-- I think that discussion would be part of tonight's discussion, too. Yeah.
Totally fair, thanks.
Are there any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Okay, Ms. Heron, can you take public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item G1, Adopt Resolution Number 6605, authorizing implementation of a pilot program between January 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2021, to provide financial relief on residents' solid waste and water bills and appropriate $164,000 from the general fund, please engage that hand feature. I'll be able to unmute your mic and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the final call for any public comment on Item G1 regarding a pilot program for financial relief on residents' solid waste and water. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So bringing it back to the council, and Ms. Chen, I have a question. Actually, I have the same question that Vice Mayor Combs had. Just thinking about if there, if we do offer a subsidy, the possibility of having one that's specific to the smaller can, if that's possible? At least that's the way I understood the question.
Yes, that is possible. Yes, if that's what the council directs staff to do, it is possible, yeah.
And then with this pilot, oh, Mr. Murphy?
Yes, so just, and before, sorry, Mayor, before you go on to your next question, I just wanted to provide one other potential option. So as Ms. Chen said, it is possible to focus on the smaller containers. One other way, which was discussed in her presentation, would be to maybe just identify a fixed dollar amount, and then that allows the discount to be applied to all households, because there are some larger households that do need larger containers that maybe cannot fit into the smaller containers, and that would provide them with some sort of relief. So I think the way to potentially achieve that would be through a fixed amount instead of the percent amount.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Nash?
Are you talking about questions right now or comments? I guess is my question.
Oh, questions or comments?
Okay, so I have a comment, and that's, I am, I think it's very important to try and help folks who are having financial hardship. I question whether the best way to do that is to develop a new program with administrative costs. And so I'd like to propose or just put out there that we possibly, that we think about just giving them money directly to Samaritan House to augment what they are already doing for the city and for our residents. And the program's already in place, people know about it, it targets individuals and families in financial hardship, and most people already know about it, so that there's, it simplifies why for the residents and for the city, and the money goes to those who need it most rather than to administrative costs. And another benefit I see is, this is actually a private pilot program, which runs for six months for $164,000. So in six months, we would need to decide what to do. And if we are just adding funds to an existing program, which is already helping people, then we can decide that we're not incurring more administrative charges, and it just seems like a much easier process.
Councilmember Carlton?
And a couple of items, we're going to be giving Samaritan House a lot of money. They're kind of apples and oranges, like if we want to give Samaritan House money, fine. This was just to kind of help, um, help make some of the, the increases in costs for households more palatable directly through cash, not through services. But I, but I see where you're going with it.
So actually, let me ask a question from someone who knows what Samaritan House is doing. Is, can they in fact help directly with utility bills, for example? Um, I was under the impression that they could and that this would actually be money that they would be able to disperse out to families and individuals, well, and individuals in need.
I'm not sure who was going to follow up on your question, Ms. Chen or Mr. Murphy. Go ahead, Ms. Chen.
Uh, to answer Councilmembers Nash, staff did reach out to Samaritan House a few months ago, and they currently don't have staff capacity to implement this program for us.
So the whole, do you mind if I respond? Um, the whole idea is not to have a new program and not to have them implement this program. It would be to have them, it would be to add additional funding to their existing program where they're helping individuals in financial hardship. We already provide funds for, um, to help people with rent. And it seems that this would be the same group of people who would presumably need, could use help with utilities. And so this would just be one more piece of what they're doing. It's not an additional program. And um, so.
Councilmember Mueller?
I think what would happen, though, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lot of people who own homes, who've lived in their homes a long time on, uh, who aren't paying anybody rent. They have a mortgage payment, or they've paid off their home. They have a set income that they get every year from social security, and they can only stretch it so far. And those are the people who are going to potentially need assistance to this, to this program as well. It's not just, not just renters.
I'm sorry. My understanding, and I'd love to get someone from staff, perhaps Rhonda, if she's available or someone. My understanding, and I spoke yesterday with the city manager about this, was that this didn't, if, I was giving rent as an example of what people go to Samaritan House for, but I believe people actually go to Samaritan House for many hardship, financial hardships. It could be a one-time thing. It could be ongoing. That, that's actually the focus of a place, and so.
The distinction, Betsy, the distinction is the program that we have right now, Samaritan House, I believe, is for renters. And so this would be programmatically different.
I believe what happens, and again, it would be great to get staff to help with this, is we do specifically have a program for renters, but that Samaritan House actually provides services to our residents as well as to others in all these other areas. It's just, we have not specifically funded that, and.
But I think staff just told us that they went to Samaritan House for the increased capacity and was told no.
That is correct. For running this program, I'm suggesting not creating a new program. Just providing additional funds to doing, for doing what they currently do in addition to rent. Could, I would request that we actually get, have someone from staff perhaps help us with this fundamental question, please?
Uh, yes, I, I don't believe that, uh, Rhonda's on, right now, she was on earlier, but I'm not sure if she was on, associated with this item. So if she happens to be, she may be able to connect with me, but, um, so I'll, I'll take a step. So yes, the current program that the city offers for rental assistance is indeed for rental assistance, and that's specific to, um, program created, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars that was set aside, twelve thousand dollars worth of administrative costs. So, um, that is specific to, to renters. So it would be a, uh, I believe what Councilmember Nash is suggesting is a modification to that program, so we, we would need to kind of reach out to Samaritan House specifically to that. The question that we did pose to Samaritan House was about, um, running this, this rate assistance program. And so we would need to go back to Samaritan House to ask a, a different question. We would need to come back to the council for what the parameters are for that program. And so that, that's a possibility. But it, it would indeed be a restructuring of the current program that the city offers with Samaritan House.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you, and thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Um, could I request that City Manager Jerome Robinson, please, uh, help here? Based on what we've discussed yesterday?
Hi. So I, um, so, stop me if I'm not answering your question, but I think the idea would be to create a different relationship with Samaritan House. And we can, we can definitely pursue that if that's the council's direction. We haven't had a chance yet to ask them that question. And, but I think the underlying administrative work that would be required of a more global program would be much less intense than a utility program, a utility financial aid program.
And do you know, thank you very much, that's helpful. Do you know whether, and whether residents currently have access to funds that are not specifically provided by Menlo Park? But Menlo Park does have residents who are going to Samaritan House for many types of financial assistance.
I, I don't know all the programs that they have, but it is my understanding that they have a broader array of programs, and that's why they triage the money that they provide to families. Anything more for me?
Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah. I, I think that's his going with this, because there's always that opportunity cost on the money that we pay for the admin that could be going for good and not the admin. So I, I, I get that. Um, as I'm thinking about this, there, there are a lot of people who are in financial distress who don't go to Samaritan House. And my concern is that it will reduce the number of people that get the aid that we would like to help. That, that's my only concern, but I, I do appreciate wanting to keep down the admin cost. I think that's a, that's a very good idea. And if we come back and find out that, you know, ninety percent do go through Samaritan House, that's fabulous. But I'm, I'm worried that a lot of, for example, maybe some elderly people who aren't reaching out but are very seriously struggling to get by might not get the aid that's intended for them.
So it's, I think, if I may, we've done a quick search, and it looks like the, the Samaritan House offers shelter, food, and utility programs currently. But again, I want to remind you that when we went to them to see if they could administer our utility financial aid program, they said they just were too overwhelmed to do that. But Samaritan House did refer us to the CCA, CCES group.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so one of the things that I think is important to make a distinction here is that we're using the term administrative costs, but we're not breaking down what those are. And what I'm curious to know is if staff knows, is, is the administrative costs actually, instead of just like, we're going to pay you to do this. Usually there's a, there's a service and, and that comes along with that. Like, when you send out a utility bill, there's a, there's a card or something within it, a hard fixed cost for something that goes with that, or something along those lines. Because my, 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 my assumption would be that we're not just giving them thirty-two thousand dollars for a person, but we're giving them thirty-three thousand dollars administrative costs for the program. In that, and so is there a way that we can see that breakdown? Because that might make it a little bit more, make it a little easier for people to sort of understand what that fee is associated with.
Okay, I think Joanna is probably the better person to answer that question, so I'm going to ask her to do so.
I appreciate it.
Um, so the thirty-three thousand dollars is a per application cost. So the, the price that was, the cost estimate was twenty-five dollars per application. And so, um, that also includes outreach and marketing. That's including assistance with the residents. Maybe they need help with the application or translation, or they're stuck on a certain step. The third party would help with that assistance. It's also helping with the re-enrollment in the care program. So care, um, you're eligible in the care program every two years. And so the admin staff would help make sure that if the deadline is, if the re-enrollment date is approaching, they would help that resident re-enroll into care, and that would translate into a re-enrollment for the solid waste discount as well as the water rate discount as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So my concern is that there is the overhead of doing the enrollment. Um, and then the information, basically, what, um, from reading the staff report, what happens is that once the program, um, monitors and makes sure that there's, that the application is filled out and that the applicant is qualified, that, which does not sound like it's, there's a tremendous amount to. Apparently, it's receiving a PG&E bill to confirm the care enrollment. Um, and then the ecology and, um, the water bill to receive the subsidy. And then the information goes back, that is then handed back to Menlo Park, and then our staff then has to coordinate with the utilities. So one of my concerns is that we are spending for six months, we would be spending thirty-two thousand dollars plus staff time to do this. And we would have, um, we would be doing this for six months. I'm, so I am greatly concerned about the amount of administrative cost and then additional resources that staff will be putting in to contact both the water district and the ecology for, to get the users signed up for this. So this is why I am more focused on something that's more direct through, if we can do it some way easier without, um, having all that administration and also perhaps being able to provide more to residents.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I, I'm sort of of, of two minds. One, I, I think I, I see it as a, a different type of engagement insistence than maybe, you know, what Councilmember Nash is suggesting that gets us those economies scales than what is a rate assistance. I think a lot of this cost, again, is connected to just the marketing, the flyers that goes out and, and sort of really those things that there aren't, um, they're just, they're, they're just costs attached to them, like, right? Having every, every, um, bill come with a certain sort of additional flyer that, that, that publicizes this. Uh, so I, I think it's, I, I think that this type of assistance program just comes with, you know, additional administrative costs. And, and I don't know that there's a way to avoid that. But to your point, Councilmember Nash, I share your concern of all of these sort of little programs that then come with their own costs and whether there is, and especially in this case, because, and again, not, not meaning or intending to sort of diminish people, especially while they're in need, but it, it seems like the actual dollar value is at times seems very minimal. Right? And again, and again, I, I know everyone's situation is, is different, and I don't mean to make light of, and I know that for some people, five dollars is, is a lot more than it might be to me, and I completely appreciate it. But, but it, it seems as though, and I think this is where, I think, Councilmember Nash, and not to sort of, you know, put words in your, your mouth, because maybe you disagree, where I share your concern, that it seems as though there, there is a lot of effort and infrastructure and costs associated with what seems as to me, at, at sort of the end of the day, a sort of a minimal sort of, uh, like dollar value to, to residents. And so that's where I share your concern, but I just don't know if there's a way to overcome that. If, if we, if we decide as a council, sorry for the background noise, that, that is a value for us to have this type of rate assistance program, I, I don't know if we can, we can overcome a way, or there's a way for us to, to avoid those, the, the, those costs. Again, because I said, I do think that the value provided by a program like this is, is different than anything else. Like, I, I think, you, you know, to, to Councilmember Mueller's earlier point, you know, people on a fixed income who maybe have paid off their house and who may be sort of like, in, you know, who may need and be willing to sort of sign up for a, a rate assistance program from their utility might be a little more hesitant to engage in Samaritan House. Right? Or, or something that sort of carries that, that name and engagement. And so, and so anyway, those are, those are my, my concerns. Like I said, I'm, I'm of two minds here, but, but this is how I'm looking at this issue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so the reason why I think it's important to do the program is because in, having delivered meals with Little House, I know there are lots of residents in our city who are older, living, uh, living with a, living with a partner on a very fixed income and frankly can't even afford them, you know, has difficulty affording and fixing their own meals. Uh, but they have their home, and they live in their home. And so, uh, so when you're talking about this sort of increase to their, to their monthly costs, it adds up. I also, I mean, I think the difficulty I have is, I don't, it's not that I don't share the concern about the cost of the administration, but like, as Councilmember Combs was saying, some things just cost money to do. And unless you're doing it in an economy of scale or it starts to make a difference, because you're serving a lot of people and you went through those administrative costs, so you drop it down per person, it just costs that much. I think, though, that what the issue is right now in our deliberation is that there's been no survey that of other providers of what it would cost them to do it, and that's leaving perhaps some concern is like, are we paying something that's incredibly expensive to bear versus what someone else would do, or are we just paying what, uh, what that would be done, what it costs? And that typically, I, I do have a question, like, did we just reach out to one person who we referred to? Or was there sort of an RFP for this, for this project? Or was there any shopping done for it that we can, that we know of? That would give, that might, that might lend some support that this isn't just, uh, so that's really a question for staff. I know it doesn't sound like we did an RFP. It sounds like it was a, a referral to an agency, a referral from one to another who might do it. But has there been any sort of survey of the market that this is what the going rate would be to do a program like this from an administrative standpoint?
May I respond, Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Great. Um, so yes, correct. This was a referral from Samaritan House. Um, the third-party vendor, CCES, they do have experience with helping out with low-income residents. For instance, one of their, one of their main services is to help residents apply for LIHEAP, the Low Income Home Energy Assistant Program. So they do have experience with similar programs such as this rate assistance program.
So I think the difficulty, though, right now, that's coming to bear with the council is that because only one entity was reached out to, there is discomfort. Because I don't even think we know what Samaritan House would have charged us for administratively to do the program. And so I think that there's some discomfort, because there's just, is that not correct, Councilmember Nash?
Sorry. Well, I believe that Samaritan House was unable to do, to add this program.
No, but, but we don't have what they would have charged for it. I don't think...
Yeah, good point.
And that's what the issue is right now, I think, is that as we're sitting here, that's, and we're trying to say, well, is this a reasonable amount to spend? I mean, things cost what they cost. Is this a reasonable amount to spend or not, I think is what the issue is. I will give the floor to Mr. Murphy, who's appeared.
Sorry, Mayor, just to supplement a little bit about what Ms. Chen was talking about. In addition, I think our first inquiry on trying to figure out the, the cost of such a program, we tapped R3, the firm that was helping with the solid waste rates. And they provided a cost estimate to us and it was more expensive than, than what we have today. So that was our, our first data point. The other data points that Joanna was able to research is what other cities do in providing this service and some of them are providing them in-house. And so we didn't think that that was going to be the best option for us. So that's where we looked, looked for a third-party provider. So I'm not sure that there are that many providers out there if we were to issue an RFP. So that's why it's not a huge sampling of potential providers for us, but we at least had a few, a few data points.
All right. Based on that, then I'm going to take our professional staff and that they're comfortable with it. So I'm, I'm ready. I, I understand your concerns, Councilmember Nash, but I just think this is what the program costs. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I'm curious what other council, well, I guess first, my other concern or another concern is that it's a six-month program right now. Right now, this is $164,000 for six months. And what, you know, I think to do the entire, anyway, I believe that this will be, what would it cost? I guess the first question is to staff, what would it, what do they anticipate the second month? And I thought I saw this in the report, but what would the second half of the year, what would the ongoing cost be of this?
Ms. Chen.
Yes, so I did do some calculations. But I can, so the first calculation was a 12-month, 12-month of only the solid waste discount. And so that would come out to be about $550,000. And then I did an expansion of 18 months of only the solid waste program, which is the 20% discount. And so for an 18 months of only the solid waste discount program, that would come out to be about $820,000. And, and so if you were interested in doing the solid waste rate and the water rate at the same time, I would need to do those calculations and, and provide that for you.
I think we need some clarity on those, those numbers. I just, so right now for a solid waste, the estimate for the six-month program is $50,000, right? The exact cost. And, and then, so how did we get from that to, to these, these, these six figures? If you extrapolate, it would seem like for, for solid waste, if you do that for a year, then you just sort of double that $50,000. You get to $100,000 and then maybe you double the administrative costs. And so then that goes to like $64,000. And so then you're, you're at $164,000 for the solid waste and the full administration costs. And then if we're talking about $82,000 for the, the water and you double that, and so you're at 160, right? And so then 160, 160, we're at, we're, we're at 3, 310 or, you know, 320.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash, I wanted to see, I'm not sure if Ms. Chen had some technical difficulties. So I wanted to give her opportunity to come back, but we can move on. Councilmember Nash.
So I was assuming that it would be about double the 163,000. So about 326, so which, of which we may save an extra $32,000 or so in administrative fees because we may not have to pay the second round. So this is, I'm just wondering, it seems once we, if we start a pilot program, it'll be, I think it'll be more difficult to stop. What is the council's, other council members' appetite for looking at this longer term?
Well, I would definitely be interested in that, looking at it longer term. But I think the purpose of the pilot is to see how well it would work and because the city doesn't offer anything like this as in right now. So.
My question is really, I'm just trying to, yes, I, I think that we would want to do it longer term. And so I'm trying to look at the budget implications for that. And very honestly, I'm just not there. I don't see, I would like to do something. I just don't think this is the right program personally because of the administrative costs. And then coming back, it seems like it still involves staff time and I'm just, I, I would hope that there would be a better way to help individuals with this amount of money.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. You had your hand up. Did you still have a question or comment? Okay. Councilmember Mueller.
I really want to help these people who need this type of assistance. I think it's important we do that. I think, I think I'm comfortable moving forward with it as we're raising rates in the middle of this pandemic. I think it needs, something that needs to be done. And so I'm going to make a motion now to go ahead and approve staff recommendation. I'm actually going to do it on the first, on first phase one. I mean, on the, I'm sorry, on the first option that staff suggested in the report.
Can I ask Ms. Heron to put up the slide so that we all can see it? Just with the options on it?
Yes, I'll second.
And just so I'm making sure I understand that, Councilmember Mueller, with, so for that option one under the water, that's a fixed, that, that's a fixed rate or a fixed amount for, for the water, the water discount, correct?
Yes. If you have a difference of opinion, Councilmember Combs, I'm happy to hear. No. Councilmember Carlton, you're count, you're comfortable with option one?
I'm comfortable with option one. I'm comfortable seconding the motion. I, I'm concerned about making sure that we get the discounts out to people in a, in a timely way because I think that the economy is not going to get better anytime soon.
So.
I, I agree. And I, I wanted to ask a question of Ms. Lucky, because there's also the smoothing rates as well. And so just addressing, I know we only had one person call in on the item that talked about his circumstance, but making sure if we do option one, that that would cover him at some, some level. It may not be everything that he would need, but at least would be something. Ms. Lucky, and then also with the smoothing rates and how all of this works together. So that's why. Thank you, you're on mute, Ms. Lucky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Taylor. Yes, so the way this would work, so if the resident qualifies for the care program, they can certainly get the discount, the 20% discount. If they have a 20-gallon cart, they would see no increase in 2021. And that would be going for each of the carts. So for the 32-gallon, I think they might be slightly paying less because we were really focused on making sure that the 20-gallon cart would not see an increase. And that's the majority of, of customers, that residential customers, 20 and 32-gallon carts.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you answering my question. And then my position on this, I, I'm supportive of helping our residents in Menlo Park, especially now, more than ever. I understand your concerns, Councilmember Nash, and Vice Mayor Combs, you brought it up as well, with providing services for, for people who are in need. There's, there's always administrative costs that go along with it. One reason why I'm supportive of what the staff has brought, because my concerns are around transparency with the process and making sure that if our residents aren't being served by the third party that we're contracting with, that there are some accountability metrics that we can put in place, I'm concerned that there wouldn't be any recourse. I'm very familiar with Samaritan House and actually on their website, it doesn't say that they do utilities. So I'm glad to hear that they are now. So hopefully they will expand that their services. I know that they already serve Menlo Park, but if it's going to delay getting this program started, we can at least start off the first six months, see how it works. Maybe Samaritan House will expand since they're the primary CBO for the county. So who knows what will happen in six months? So I'm supportive of moving forward on it. Yeah, that's, that's my thoughts. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'll just say like I, I can support, support the motion also. I do have some concerns. And again, part of that is discounting those larger, those larger cans. But I, I am willing to sort of hold those aside, given that this is a six-month pilot project and just sort of see what we get back on the other side of that. You know, is the, the number of people with the 96-gallon cans getting the discount zero? Or is it, is it, is it some very small number? And to Mr. Murphy's point, people who, you know, have very specific circumstances, which we still would want to give them assistance. So I do have concerns, but I am supportive of moving forward with the, the six-month pilot.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
And as you look at the option one approach, it is a, it is a larger amount of money put out against the same service charge. And the way I see it, that's, it actually makes me more comfortable with that service with the administrative charge. Because the way I see it is that the folks who may, if we've given the money to Samaritan House, the extra money, this is still going to end up in the, in the, in the pocket of people who need it. And so I think, I think option one just makes the most, the most sense here. So I'm, I appreciate this for, I appreciate your support, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I guess two things. One is, I also want to, I will be voting against this tonight, not be, I wish that we would have a better way to support individuals who are in financial need. I do have a concern about the amount of money that will be given to, how we will be supporting the individuals versus the amount of administrative costs. I have another concern and that is District Four is entirely Cal Water. And so none of the water subsidies will help anyone who is currently Cal Water that is, extends well beyond District Four. And it is anyone who is currently on Cal Water or on the O'Connor Water or on, I believe there's, we have a few residents on Palo Alto Water, will not be helped by these subsidies. And so I would love to find another way, but I understand what's, that there are four votes for this. What I would request is that we get perhaps bi-monthly updates as to how the program's going so that we don't wait until six months to hear it. I would say monthly, but I think that may be too, too much for staffs, so regular updates.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And I believe we get updates on the funding we provided for Samaritan House for the rental assistance. Do we get updates on that? I think we do. Not sure if Starla Jerome Robinson or Mr. Murphy, hello.
Hi. We do provide you periodic reports from Samaritan House. It's probably a good time to work on the most recent one. So we'll do that.
Is it, do you know how often, if it's bi-monthly, if it's quarterly?
I'm not sure it's been on a specific routine. I think we've just tried to do it periodically. And I will, to, to present a report to you on the, the new reductions in financial assistance, we just need to find out what's going to be required to produce those reports. But it's very, we'll be glad to supply that information to you.
So what I'm actually...
Oh, go ahead.
What I was actually talking about was not getting reports from Samaritan House, but was getting reports on this program and how it is doing, how many people are being enrolled and how that's, how that's all working.
That's what I understood.
Okay. I asked because I figured if we were getting a report on Samaritan House, we could do it the same, get reports on both. That's why I brought it up.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller and then Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, and I apologize for speaking again, Madam Mayor. Though the point I did want to make to those who, who may either read about this later or see this this evening, is I think it's important to put into context that this council worked very hard with our professional staff to put us in the position in this pandemic to be able to make decisions like this. We worked very hard early on in the pandemic to get ourselves and our budget in a position that we would be able to help people and make decisions about helping people in a fiscally responsible manner as we move forward in the pandemic. And this is how I see this at this time. So I realize that some may look at this and say, what is the council doing? But we worked very hard so that we would be able to do things like this. And as we're, and so I think it's a, I think, I just want to remind people of that as they see this right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say for the record, and I completely understand where Councilmember Nash is, is coming from. And I, as you guys know, I'm all about sort of district and understanding things from the district impact. One, the, the solid waste does include the entire city, right? And, and the Cal Water customers, there is a program that they can apply for that, that is, that is similar. So I do think that those, it is worth pointing that, that out. But, but again, to your point, I know this is city general funds and, and it's being made available to a pool of, of people that does not include those, those residents that, that are Cal Water customers. But, but there is a Cal Water program, as, as I understand it, that, that is similar.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. And I just want to comment, I actually left, I, I do not like having to look too much by district, very honestly. I, we all serve citywide. We're elected by district, we serve citywide, as everyone knows. But I, and I left, that is why I actually left it to the end and was not planning to, depending how the discussion went, I was not planning to actually even bring that up. And I actually wish I had brought up that, it in a different order, in that 50% of the, of the city is serviced by municipal, Menlo Park municipal water, 50% is not. My district happens to be in that not district, but it is actually 50% of the city will not be helped by this. And what has been brought up, not this time, but before when we discussed the Cal Water subsidies, was I did actually have several residents reach out to me and were upset because Cal Water residents, Cal Water users actually already do pay into a subsidy fund. And so that's, that is the point. So yes, there is a fund, but Cal Water users actually already pay into it. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I'm just going to say something real quick, because I feel like we've discussed this a lot. I, I just wanted to point out that it's, it, for the people listening, it sounds like Cal Water doesn't have a program and they do. They, they have a, a program that helps them too. We're making sure that everyone has a program available. So I'm, I'm happy to call the question.
And just a reminder, Samaritan House is open to everyone. It is not specific to an area that you live in the city or county of San Mateo. It's open to everyone who is in need.
So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, with a second by City Council, Councilmember Carlton, to adopt Resolution Number Six. to adopt Resolution Number 6605 authorizing implementation of the Option Number One pilot program between January 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2021, to provide financial relief on residents' solid waste and water bills and appropriate $164,000 from the General Fund. Under was an amendment posed by City Councilmember Nash to provide regular updates to the City Council on the program. And if City Councilmembers Mueller and Carlton are okay with that from the amendment?
Sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, City Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
No.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Nash dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you, Council, for that robust discussion. And now we will have our dinner break. It is 7 o'clock. I'll see you at 7:20.
Just a reminder to disengage your webcams and microphones. And upon returning, please only engage your webcams and remain, if your microphone's on mute. Thank you.
I was worried I had.
Welcome back, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Having everyone back on our virtual desk. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And the next item on regular business is item G2. Authorize the city manager to enter into funding agreement with Real Social Good Investments, LLC to adopt a resolution 6603 to establish no parking zones on Laurel Street and to approve installation of no right turn on red when bicycles are present signs. To introduce this item is our Associate Transportation Engineer, Renee Bale.
Thank you, Renee. We can see the presentation. If you wouldn't mind, you could engage your webcam for the duration of the presentation.
All right. Can you see my presentation now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and good evening to you and members of the City Council. It's nice to see you again. As Mayor Taylor has mentioned, we have several recommendations. Let's see. Regarding this project. Oh, wait. Having difficulty. So, my presentation agenda, in my presentation agenda, I'll be talking briefly about the Station 1300, which is now known as the Spring Line Project. Talking about the funding agreement that we're currently working with the developer. I'm also going to be talking about the no parking restriction on Laurel Street that we're asking the City Council to approve, as well as the no right turn on red when bicycles are present sign. I'll also be talking about why staff is recommending alternative one over alternative two. And at the end of the presentation, I'll just repeat what the staff's recommendation that Mayor Taylor indicated at the onset of this item. Just for directional references, to be consistent with what we have in our staff report, Laurel Street is oriented north-south, with the top portion of Laurel as the north leg and Ravenswood Avenue as east-west, with the top portion of Ravenswood as east. As you can see from this slide here, the southbound approach from Laurel Street is currently only one lane, which is a shared left turn through and right turn lane with a bike lane situated on the right side or on the west side of Laurel Street. The northbound approach on Laurel Street shows an exclusive left turn lane and a shared through and right turn lane, with the northbound bike lane approach stopped approximately 120 feet short of the intersection. On-street parking is currently allowed, though restricted on the west side of Laurel Street. And there are some red curb restrictions on the west side of Laurel Street, south of Ravenswood Avenue. The existing traffic signal system at this intersection is old and needs to be upgraded and modernized. The Station 1300 or Spring Line Project is a mixed commercial use and housing project located at 1300 El Comino Real, which is northeasterly of the intersection of El Comino Real and Oak Grove Avenue. And it's near the Caltrain Station, located between Ravenswood and Oak Grove. The construction started in spring of 2018 and is anticipated to be completed or occupied in 2022. The project environmental impact report determined that this project has potentially significant impact on the intersection of Ravenswood Avenue and Laurel Street. And there are requirements that need to be met prior to occupancy. And one of them is completing the mitigation measures specific to Ravenswood and Laurel. The ER mitigation measure required of the Station 1300 project is for the developer to reconfigure the southbound Laurel Street such that the approach will now comprise of an exclusive left turn lane and a shared through and right turn lane, with a bike lane to remain. The mitigation measure, in addition to pavement rehab and restriping of the southbound approach, will also entails modification of two existing signal poles, and the signal poles attach these poles, which is a significant amount of the developer's scope of work. The city has CIP to modify traffic signalized intersections at several locations, and one of them is the intersection of Ravenswood and Laurel. And also the TMP plan, which has listed this intersection as part of that project, and the scope included in that project is to the extension of the northbound bike lane on Laurel Street. Rather than having two specific projects and two different construction timelines and coordination between the city and the developer, the city staff approach the developer with the goal of combining these two projects, so to have this project under one contract and be able to schedule the construction more streamlined and also less delay. And in order for that to happen, there's a need for a funding agreement. The funding agreement will allow the city to be the construction contract administrator, having the bulk of the construction cost, and be able to streamline the contract bid process and comply with the public contract bidding laws, as well as having the prevailing wage rates applied. And the funding agreement will also allow the city to require the developer to reimburse the city at the end of the completion of the project for its share of the construction cost, including inspection and construction administration. This is the graphical representation of the no parking restriction on Laurel Street that we're asking the City Council to approve. Graphical representation of what's in resolution number 6603. The proposed red curb addition here on the west side of Laurel Street, north of Ravenswood, is approximately 145 feet or seven parking spaces. And this will allow the installation of the additional lane for the southbound approach without physically widening the street. So, the installation will stay within the curb-to-curb width of this side of Laurel Street. The 75-foot red curb addition here on the west side of Laurel, south of Ravenswood, will allow the extension of the northbound bike lane approach to go all the way to the intersection. Because of the need to shift the lanes, the northbound lanes to the left, would require removing the parking approximately about 125 feet here, without physically widening the road outside the curb-to-curb width. When we brought this to the Complete Streets Commission in 2019, we did notify the businesses and residences within 500 feet of this intersection, and that includes Trinity Church and Junior League Office on Ravenswood Avenue. And at this Complete Streets Commission, when this item was brought to them for consideration, the Complete Streets Commission unanimously approved the proposed restriction on Laurel Street. Also, prior to our, two weeks prior to our meeting tonight, we also notified the same businesses and residences within 500 feet of this intersection. So, this no right turn red curb present is not Caltrans approved and requires City Council to sign exception. And this application here that we have on Southbound Havelton Avenue at Willow Road, it did require City Council design exception before staff installed this sign here. The approval from Council will allow the city staff to install the signs at other locations that are in association with bike boxes and two-stage left turns, without going back to Council for approval. So, there were two alternatives. One for the intersection design layout that we want, that Stop 1's City Council to consider. Alternative one is what staff is recommending. The alternative will allow or show here that the existing lane configuration on the northbound approach will stay the same.
So the my presentation agenda in my presentation agenda, I'll be talking briefly about the Station 1300, which is now known as the Spring Line project. Talking about the funding agreement that we're currently working with the developer. We're all I'm also going to be talking about the no parking restriction on Laurel Street that we're asking the city council to approve, as well as the no right turn on red when bicycles are present sign. I'll also be talking about why staff why staff is recommending alternative one over alternative two. And at the end of the presentation, I'll just repeat what the staff's recommendation that Mayor Taylor has indicated that at the onset of this item. Just for directional references, to be consistent with what we have in our staff report. Laurel Street is oriented north-south with the top portion of Laurel as the north leg and Ravenswood Avenue as east-west, with the top portion of Ravenswood as east. As you can see from this slide here, the southbound approach from Laurel Street is currently only one lane, which is a shared left turn through and right turn lane with a bike lane situated on the right side or on the west side of Laurel Street. The northbound approach on Laurel Street shows an exclusive left turn lane and a shared through and right turn lane with the northbound bike lane approach stop approximately 120 feet short of the intersection. On-street parking is currently allowed, though restricted on the west side of Laurel Street. And there are some red curb restrictions on the west side of Laurel Street, south of Ravenswood Avenue. The existing traffic signal system at this intersection is old and needs to be upgraded and modernized. The Station 1300 or Spring Line project is it's a mixed commercial use and housing project located at 1300 El Comino Real, which is northeastern of the intersection of El Comino Real and Oak Grove Avenue. And it's near the Caltrans station located between Ravenswood and Oak Grove. The construction started in spring of 2018 and is anticipated to be completed or occupied occupied in 2022. The project environmental impact report determined that this project has potentially significant impact on the intersection of Ravenswood Avenue and Laurel Laurel Street. And there are requirements that need to be met prior to occupancy. And one of this, one of them is completing the mitigation measures specific to Ravenswood and Laurel. This is the ER mitigation measure required of the Station 1300 project is for the developer to reconfigure the southbound Laurel Street such that the approach will now will comprise of an exclusive left turn lane and a shared through and right turn lane with a bike lane to remain. The the mitigation measure in addition to pavement rehab and restriping of the southbound approach will also entails modification of two existing signal poles and the signal poles attach these poles, which which is a significant amount of the developers scope of work. The city has a CIP to modify traffic signalized intersections at several locations, and one of them is the intersection of Ravenswood and Laurel. And the and also the TMP plan, which has listed this intersection as part of that project and the and the scope included in that project is to the extension of the northbound, northbound bike, excuse me, northbound bike lane on Laurel Street. Rather than having two specific projects and two different construction timelines and coordination between the city and and the developer, the city staff approach the developer with the goal of combining these two projects so to have this project under one contract and be able to schedule the construction more more streamlined and also less delay. And in order for for that to happen, there's a need for a funding agreement. The the funding agreement will allow the city to be the construction contract administrator, having the bulk of the construction cost and be able to streamline the contract bid process and comply with the public contract contract bidding laws as well as having the prevailing wage rate wage rates applied. And the the funding agreement will also allow the city to require the developer to reimburse the city at the end of the completion of the project for the for the its share of the construction cost, including inspection and construction administration. This is the graphical representation of the no parking restriction on Laurel Street that we're asking the city council to approve graphical representation of what's in resolution number 6603. The the proposed red curb addition here on the west side of Laurel Street, north of Ravenswood, is approximately 145 feet or seven parking spaces. And this will allow the installation of the additional lane for the southbound approach without physically widening the street. So the the installation will stay within the the curb-to-curb width of the side this side of Laurel Street. The 75-foot red curb addition here on the west side of Laurel, south of Ravenswood, will allow the extension of the northbound bike lane approach to go all the way to the intersection. Because of the need to shift the lanes, the northbound lanes to the left would require removing the parking approximately about 100 125 here feet here without physically widening the road outside the curb-to-curb width. When we brought this to the Complete Streets Commission in 2019, we did notify the businesses and residences within 500 feet of the this intersection, and that includes Trinity Church and Junior League Office on Ravenswood Avenue. And at this Complete Streets Commission, when this item was brought to them for consideration, the Complete Streets Commission unanimously approved the proposed restriction on Laurel Street. Also, prior to our two weeks prior to our meeting tonight, we also notified the same businesses and residences within 500 feet of this intersection. So this no right turn red when bicycles are present is not Caltrans approved and requires city council design exception. And and this application here that we have on southbound Havelton Avenue at Willow Road, it did require city council design exception before we before staff installed this sign here. The approval from from council will allow the the city staff to install the signs at other locations that are in association with bike boxes and two-stage left turns without going back to council for approval. So there there are two alternatives. One for for the design, this intersection design layout that we want that Stop 1's city council to consider. Alternative one is what staff staff is recommending. The the alternative will allow or show here that the existing lane configuration on the northbound approach will stay the same with the exclusive left turn and the shared through and right with a bike lane extension installed on on the right side of the shared through and and right shared through and right right turn lane. For the southbound approach, this is the configuration that's required for of the Station 1300 or Spring Line project to install as mitigation measure, which is to add an an exclusive southbound left turn lane. And and the bike lane is located on the right side of the shared through and right. Bike boxes are recommended in front of the shared through and right lane for both approaches. And and its placement will preclude in 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 conjunction or with the no right turn on reds red sign will will preclude the people that are that want to make a right turn and will also provide priority to the bicyclists during for the for signals turning from red to green. So this graphically illustrates where the potential conflict points between bikes and car, and and it's showing here that it's it's mainly where here where cars are trying to make the right turn for both both approaches. Alternative two is what the Complete Streets Commission recommended when this item was brought before them in February of this year. The the there's a change, there's a proposed to to change the lane configuration for the southbound approach. So the the exclusive left turn lane will be now a shared through and right, I mean through and left. And there'll be an exclusive right turn lane, and that will be installed for both approaches. And then and then the bike lane will be in between the exclusive right turn lane and the shared through and and left turn lane. They're also recommending high-visibility crosswalks as well as bulbouts on the northeastern southeastern corner and southwest corner of this of the street of the intersection. The the lines here graphically illustrates illustrate where the potential conflicts could occur between bikes and cars while bikes trying to go to the right turn lane. So the NAC2 Urban Bikeway Design Guidance recommends both Alternatives 1 and 2 as safe through bike lane and both treatments enables would enable bicyclists were to position themselves relatively safely relative to the vehicular lanes and also will provide more predictable locations where bicyclists and motorists could could be in conflict and will also allow alert motors to to merging bicycle traffic. So the NAC2 doesn't appear to recommend one over the other. I think it all depends on how on what the lane configuration is at the approach. We we showed the level of service analysis for and and I'm just showing here the the in the staff report, and I'm just showing here the the extreme case, the worst-case scenario, which is a 22 2022 conditions and the PM pick-out and specifically to the northbound approach. And as you can see from this slide here, the the alternative one has a 47.8 seconds of approach delay, which degrades is degrades to 67.4 seconds with with the alternative two. And and the level of service will degrade from level of service D to E. And the queue length will also increase from approximately 14 vehicles to 23 vehicles. So to illustrate what that queue length is, which is about 23 vehicles or approximately 454 feet. As you can see here that the queuing will reach as almost as close to the exit of the council chambers parking lot. And again, this is with the alternative to lane configuration. So the staff recommendations is authorized the city manager to enter into the funding agreement with the current administrator of the Spring Line project, which is the Real Social Good Investments. And for council to approve resolution number 6603 to establish the no parking zones on the west side of Laurel Street, north and south of Ravenswood Avenue, and to approve the installation of the no right turn on red when bicycles are present sign, as well as approving what the staffs is recommending as the alternative one for the intersection design layout. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have regarding this presentation and the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill, for the presentation, Councilmember Carlton.
I just have one quick question before we go to to public comment. We've we went through this before when we took parking spaces away from a church. And pre-pandemic, I used to go to Trinity. And I know that they do have serious parking problems. Have you reached out to the church? And have they commented at all on losing the parking spaces in front?
No, we the only reach out we did was to two previous occasions, and they they never reached out to us.
You did what?
We we the only outreach we did was sending those postcards at two different locations. But but they never reached us, reached out to us or expressed any concerns about removing parking as we had proposed.
Okay, so nobody's nobody called the church or anything. All right, thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Bill before we take public comment? Okay, thank you again for the presentation. And at this time, Ms. Heron, if you can take public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G2, authorize the city manager to enter into a funding agreement, Real Social Good Investments LLC. And number two, adopt resolution number 6603 to establish no parking zones on Laurel Street. And number three, approve installation of no right turn on red when bicycles are present signs. Please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. Our first public commenter will be Katie Beruzzi. Katie, you are off mute. Would like to address the city council at this time.
I'm great, thank you. I have a lot to say. I'm going to try to pack it in fast. And I can have follow-up conversations with you all. So I was the Complete Streets Commissioner who was not present at this meeting, and it took me a while to unpack reading this report, why the commission voted the way they did, or why I think they did, and why the staff was making the recommendation that they did. And I just want to lead with. So I think that I don't believe alternative two should have ever been presented as an alternative at the commission meeting, because alternative two, which was not generated by staff, it was generated by a commissioner, is not actually a solution to the problem that this project is trying to solve. The project is trying to address projected projected congestion from Station 1300 by adding a left turn lane, and it has some great features for bikes and pedestrians, too. Alternative two, as I understand it, is a response to a way that the staff drew the the turn lanes in their technical diagram that made Complete Streets Commissioners worry about potential right hooks. And it kind of looks, if you look at the diagram, like the staff are actually planning on painting a right turn lane signal on the pavement next to the bike lane. And that would be bad, because that would be telling drivers that if they want to make a right turn at that intersection, they should stay to the left of the bike lane. But that's not actually what we do in any of the places in our city where we have this configuration. And we actually have this configuration at that same intersection on Ravenswood in front of Trinity. So if you think about it, if you're heading into town and you're stopped on Ravenswood at the Laurel Light in front of Trinity, and you could turn right to go up toward Nativity or left to go to your city council meeting if you're heading from like my part of town, MA area. There's a left-hand turn lane, and there's a through lane from which cars can also turn right, and there's a bike lane to the right there. That's like a really standard configuration. And yes, right hooks are possibly a problem. But like, we have to navigate this as cyclists and drivers all the time. And there are ways to do it, and there are ways to make it clearer, like having bike boxes and having turn restrictions. And we also, I think, just need to do a better job educating drivers about what the California Vehicle Code says, which is that when you're trying to turn right and there's a bike lane to your right, you're supposed to like merge into the bike lane and not like go all the way up to the stop and then try to cut the bikes off. So that's like something a lot of people don't know. But I actually just, I think alternative one is great. It's like one of these rare win-win-wins where it's better for pedestrians, it's better for cyclists, and certainly better for level of service for vehicles. I've been a parishioner at Trinity for a long time. I would not worry about the parking. We are allowed to use SRI's parking lot, which is huge and encouraged to do so, and I think that they will appreciate the increased safety enhancements. And I could say more, but I'm running out of time. In short, I just, I think there was some confusion. And alternative one is definitely better for everybody.
Thank you, Katie, for your comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Kim Novello. So Kim, if you could maybe mute your end of your computer, and I will start your three-minute timer right now.
Okay, thank you. If I'm live?
Yes, you are.
Sorry, everyone. Thank you so much for So I am a resident on Noel Drive, which hits Laurel Street between Ravenswood and Oak Grove. So I'm on the northbound side of Laurel. And my concern, number one, is that I live in a rural border, and I have other neighbors in our neighborhood. Also, I have children, and we walk. And I if you're number one, having children, it makes it feel like
I'm sorry, we're unable to to understand you. Excuse me for interrupting you, Kim.
Kim, can you hold on just one brief moment? We're having some difficulty hearing you. Oh, no, 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 that's quite all right. Um, let me see if I a way better way to get you live there. Okay, so Kim, you can start your public comment again, and let me just see if folks here are able to hear you a little bit better.
Okay. Anything that's good for enabling me to speak with you, Nick? My name is Kim Novello and I'm a resident on Noel Drive, which it it's a curving street that hits both Laurel Street as well as Ravenswood. So I'm on the north end of Laurel. I'm very concerned about increasing the traffic, not just congestion, but really speeding and cars speeding through our neighborhood. My concern is that if we start, number one, alternative two, I definitely would not be in favor of. I have a seven-year-old daughter, and my neighbors also have young children, and we walk down Laurel Street to Birch Park across Ravenswood. And I am very concerned with the alternative two, that cars will just take right-hand turns without stopping or slow down to a stop. And I haven't heard any discussion really about pedestrians. I'm also in favor of bike safety. But I have been a resident of the Smiths' Club for over 40 years. I grew up here. And I want to maintain the neighborhood feel of our town. And I do not want more lanes added to our town. I do not want parking removed from people that, it's like mostly residents use those parking spots. And I'm a resident in the area, and I have folks that are coming to the apartments across the street at Noel Drive Street. And I'm concerned, but mostly for the pedestrian feel walking here and the fact that we're across the street from the park. I want to keep, you know, keep the parking. It adds a factor of pedestrians and cars, and it makes it feel like we're in more of a community than a freeway. I'm not in favor of segregation of the means, putting freeway types to big streets like Ravenswood. Such a fast street between, you know, people live between those streets and the park and those types of streets and schools. So I'd like to keep the community feel. I do not, I definitely don't want alternative two, but I would also prefer that we do not make the parking, and that we keep things as they are. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Kim, for your public comment. I'm going to disconnect our call now, okay? Thank you. Thank you, members of the city council. We were having some difficulty connecting her through GoToWebinar. Our next public commenter will be Stephen Herman. Stephen, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
I didn't intend to raise my hand, and the application seems to keep doing that. I keep on lowering it, and it keeps raising it. So it's a technical glitch. I have no comment on this topic.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. Our next public commenter will be Adina Levin. Adina, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, Adina Levin, a member of the Complete Streets Commission, speaking for myself, except to report something that I will report in a second. So first of all, as Ms. Beruzzi said, the original presentation to the Complete Streets Commission was confusing, and I will admit to being one of the people who was confused by the initial presentation, which seemed to show something that Katie explained to me that it wasn't showing, which was that the initial design was encouraging drivers to drive into bicyclists when making turns, which is a common kind of hazard. But apparently that was an issue of the drawing rather than the design for the street. So with that, I agree with what Ms. Beruzzi said. And the thing that I will say with a commission chair hat to report on is that in the next meeting, we will be having a conversation about one of the items that we were charged to follow up on as part of the implementation of the Transportation Master Plan, which is to potentially to work with staff to help to have the designs and diagrams that are used for community meetings with laypeople, including the particularly interested laypeople on commissions to help us understand what's going on and therefore to give the most constructive feedback. So depending on where my colleagues go with the conversation tomorrow, we may work on helping staff create tools that are easier for us to understand on the commission and easier for community members to understand when being asked to give feedback on designs that are brought to the community. And the the last thing I would like to say is I do support the continuous bike lane And the last thing I would like to say is I do support the continuous bike lanes in the Alternative One, which had been in the Transportation Master Plan that the City Council had approved. And in terms of a community feel, to be able to have people of many different ages and abilities to be able to bicycle and have a continuous bike lane really does increase that level of safety and, you know, helps with younger people and older people be able to travel safely through town to places like the library and City Hall and downtown and other common destinations. So please do keep the continuous bike lanes for safety for people of all ages. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina, for your comment. So this will be the last call for public comment on item G2. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron, and thank you for all the public comment. Just wanted to bring it back to the council if there are any other questions for staff based on what you heard from public comment. Councilmember Mueller.
Is there any reason why this approval is time-sensitive this evening? In essence, the question is, without foreshadowing too much, is there any reason why this can't be sent back to the Complete Streets Commission for full input since there seems to have been some procedural confusion or substantive confusion that evening?
Mr. Bale, are you still available for questions?
I am. Yes, I'm available. Can you see me or can you hear me?
I can see and hear you.
So the, we've been working with the developer with real social good investments. And again, their concern about the timeline, obviously, if we delay this project further or if we need to bring it back to the Complete Streets Commission, there would be a delay in the critical path that we are right now in getting this, getting the funding agreement approved and subsequently going to go on a bidding process and getting a contractor to work on the project and eventually complete. So we're just concerned that the additional delay might just delay the project and affect the critical path that we are in right now.
Can I ask, Mr. Bale, is the Complete Streets Commission, are they going to meet in December?
They're meeting tomorrow. So the next meeting for this will be in January. If we decide. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a couple of questions, actually, one question specific to the outreach, just to follow up on Councilmember Carlton's question. So why wasn't the church contacted?
We did, I mean, that's a good question that you're asking. We, as our practice, we send notifications out to businesses and residences within 500 feet of the intersection. And we ask them to email us or contact us if they have any concerns or issues with this. And if they do, we normally talk to them about their concern or we also include that as part of the package when we go to the Complete Streets Commission or to the City Council. So in this case, we never did receive any concerns or no issues. So we did not talk to any of the businesses or residences that are within the meeting notification area.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure there's no confusion on this. We did contact the church twice with written notifications and we did not hear back from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton.
I asked that question more as a matter of procedure because Katie Baruzzi is very, very active in the church. And so.
Kat, it looks like we're losing your connection here. You may need to disengage your webcam. I will work with City Councilmember Carlton on getting her back online if the City Council wishes to continue this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Herron.
So while that's occurring, maybe I can just throw out one alternative for the council to consider. It is possible that for tonight, the council could adopt the funding agreement with the developer and approval of the resolution for no parking zone installation. And then we could go back to the Complete Streets Commission in January and then return to the council for the selection of Alternative One or Alternative Two.
Councilmember Mueller.
That would be my motion, cutting to the quick.
Councilmember Nash.
I second the motion.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so I'll just weigh in. I mean, I'll be frank, my support isn't going to change irrespective of what the Complete Streets Commission does or says. So I would be willing to go with the full approval tonight. But if the idea is that let's just focus on the parking, the funding, and then wait until the Complete Streets Commission again weighs in on Alternative One or two, then I'm fine with that approach. But I'll be frank, it won't at all change my support. And so for that reason, I would be comfortable with proceeding for approval of the full project tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller.
If my colleagues are all in support of it, I'll go ahead and vote for it this evening. But if there is any confusion around that, then I'd be fine saying it back to the Complete Streets Commission just because of what they recommended at the last meeting. But I'm fine approving it this evening if that's where everyone else is on it.
I'm comfortable moving forward, especially with what Ms. Baruzzi said about, or actually, no, that was Ms. Levin that made the comment about getting things in a clear presentation for the public to understand what's going on. So I'm comfortable approving everything that's being recommended by staff. Councilmember Nash.
So given that we've heard from two Complete Streets Commissioners, I would be comfortable with it too, although I would like to point out that there was a letter from another commissioner who's no longer with the commission on CCIN. But I have also, I would be comfortable supporting Alternative One. My question, I do have one additional question, and that's we are looking at trying to traffic calm streets. And so I'm wondering on this diagram, it looked like there were lanes that were fairly wide and like 11 and 12 feet wide. And if those could, if you could look at those, if it makes sense to professional staff to actually narrow those, provide more bike, more width to the bike lanes and also that way hopefully calm the traffic since wider lanes obviously encourage faster speeds. So that would be the one. I don't believe it has to be part of the motion, but I would request that staff would look carefully at lane widths. And very honestly, that's throughout the city as we can reduce them at the very wide lanes that we have. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
So based on the input of my colleagues, I'll amend my motion to move approval of Option One as presented by professional staff this evening.
Vice Mayor Combs.
I'll second that motion. I would add, I want to be responsive to the one public comment we had expressing some opposition to the removal of parking. And I certainly understand the concern, but I do think obviously in this scenario, we're in a position of trade-offs. And this is an approach to, you know, not a major intersection, but certainly a busier intersection, especially for streets of this level. And so, and again, one of the trade-offs is that with a parking removal, we get better ability for bikes to safely approach the intersection and proceed through it. And so in that sense, I'm supportive of this, but I do understand that concern. But I think, again, in this scenario, the trade-off weighs in favor of removing the parking and again, allowing for greater clarity of the interaction between bikes and cars at this intersection. But again, I second Councilmember Mueller's motion.
Thank you. And Ms. Herron, I just wanted to check in to see if Councilmember Carlton is on the line.
Hello, all. I am working with Kat to bring her back online if I can just have maybe a minute or two more. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Nagaya.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, councilmembers. I just wanted to take a moment and respond to Vice Mayor Combs's comments about the concerns about pedestrian safety at the intersection, if you'd like a follow-up on that. Yeah, we heard parts of Ms. Novello's comments enough to, I think, catch the concerns about crossing the street. And so I did want to highlight one element of the proposal that's before you tonight as well. It's consistent across both alternatives. And it's a modification to the traffic signal to provide a dedicated left-turn phase for traffic on Ravenswood that will then separate when pedestrians are crossing the street from vehicle traffic. And so what happens today is vehicles often are trying to find a gap in oncoming traffic to make a left turn and paying attention to oncoming traffic. And so this should be a significant safety enhancement for pedestrians to get across the street by modifying that traffic signal phasing as well. So we haven't highlighted it as much since it's consistent across both options, but that is part of the proposal as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So as long as we're waiting for Councilmember Carlton and we have our Public Works Director here, I'd like to ask about the bike boxes. And if you can explain whether or not they should be extended all the way across the left-turn lane, what the advantage, it seems like that could be an advantage as well for people trying to turn left.
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Nash. It's actually something that our transportation team was looking at earlier today as we were reviewing the diagrams. And I think it's something that we can continue to evaluate as we move into final design. The trade-off is that it would shorten the distance that left-turning vehicles have to stack up. And so we may see that queue spill back a little bit more. But we could definitely look at that as part of the follow-up completion of the design package.
Just generally as a comment, I believe that lots of bikes do travel there, both because of school and all of the facilities that are nearby, and that it seems like it's much safer to have the bike boxes there out front, even if it does shorten the stacking a little bit.
Yeah, we were, we were looking at was the volume of left-turning bicyclists. It's one of the considerations to look at with that.
And then I guess one more question is, I believe that there is a slight pedestrian delay there. But if we could make, wherever we can add that pedestrian delay for streets such as Laurel and Ravenswood, that would be beneficial. This is for the, when the light turns green and that the walk, I'm sorry, the walk sign actually precedes the light turning green so that pedestrians get a chance to start and therefore are visible, which I know, Ms. Nagaya, you know. But therefore the pedestrians are visible when the car, the traffic starts. And so there's a reduction in the collisions.
Yes, Mr. Bale actually programs the traffic signals for the city. So that's something that's existing and we would look to continue. That's great, great feedback.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I'll just have one additional follow-up question. Since there was a back and forth about notifications specifically to the church. And I think that the city manager made it clear that the church, Trinity Church, received notification as required by our standards or regulation. Are there scenarios in which you might have a stakeholder that the city would pick up the phone and sort of call and see if there's actually someone there that they can reach versus just relying on the, you know, the postcard notification? And I'm not suggesting that that is the ideal situation because again, I could see issues of fairness about like sort of when you call someone a stakeholder directly versus when you just sort of rely on the postcard. But I was just, you know, inquiring whether there are those scenarios again, because obviously the church is a large stakeholder in that area and certainly has, specifically, obviously, on Sunday, when we're not in a pandemic, has lots of usage for parking in the area. And so I just want to understand, are there some circumstances where, you know, we might have gone and just sort of picked up the phone and seen if we could have gotten someone on the line?
Yeah, we did for this, we did contact the Junior League office manager a couple of days ago. And I left a message and indicated to her that if she has any concerns or want to know more about the project, she can either contact me or email me. Other than that, we, I didn't, or we didn't approach any other stakeholder related to this project.
I'm back just to let you know, I had to call in. My computer's not working.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Councilmember Carlton. And I do assume that City Councilmember Mueller is still with us. I still see him in queue. So Mayor Taylor, I can either restate the motion or if there are further questions or comments, I can move on.
I think it'd be great to restate the motion for Councilmember Carlton.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller. And I have it at the second by City Councilmember Nash. Is that correct? Or was it Vice Mayor Combs?
Um, great.
Thank you. So the motion by City Councilmember Mueller, seconded by Vice Mayor Combs, to one, authorize the city manager to enter into a funding agreement with Real Social Investment LLC; to number two, adopt resolution number 6603 to establish no parking zones on Laurel Street; and number three, approve installation of no right turn on red when bicycles are present. With that, is there any further City Council questions or discussion?
Was that approving number one?
It is approving basically what staff has recommended, the numbers one, two, and three.
Okay, that's great. I'm completely fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
City Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I actually think Councilmember- Thank you. I actually think Councilmember Carlton brings up a good point. I don't see in here that it's approving the alternative number one. So do we, I guess the question is, do we need that in this motion?
I can add it as number one for clarification. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will call votes, City Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller. And goes an aye, City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is G3, Adopt Resolution Number 6602, approving the City Council Community Funding Subcommittee's recommendation regarding the 2020-2021 community funding allocation and amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. To introduce this item is our Assistant Administrative Director, Dan Jacobson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Judy, are you going to present this presentation or should I present it? I have a very brief presentation.
And Dan, I just sent you a presentation if you could display. Thank you.
So at this time, can you see the presentation? I'm sorry, I can't see it.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I have a very brief, very brief presentation for you today, mostly around the context, given that this is a subcommittee recommendation to the rest of the council. So it is their recommendation and not staff's recommendation today. So for context, the Community Funding Grant Program is a city council policy. It funds organizations that provide services to the community that the city does not. The policy outlines four of those populations in particular. So disabled populations, emergency assistance, low income support, seniors and youth. All of the grant awardees are nonprofit organizations. The policy does specify that up to 1.7% of the city's property taxes in a given fiscal year may be allocated toward the program. Just for context, in the current year, that amounts to around 512,000, the 1.7 would be. However, that is not the amount budgeted nor recommended. And then the subcommittee is appointed by the city council. So this year, that is Councilmember Carlton and Vice Mayor Combs. They reviewed 30 applications in 2020. And in those applications, there was a total of 549,500 that was requested. So the subcommittee went through all of the applications. They were reviewed by the subcommittee and by staff. The subcommittee is recommending $276,000 in total awards. Just for reference, that number is slightly lower than fiscal year 2019-20. It does recognize the extraordinary need during 2020, which I'm certain that I don't have to tell you. The recommendation does provide funding to 28 out of the 30 applicants. There were two that did not receive a recommendation. And then the subcommittee also made the recommendation that the council reconsider the direct service requirement in the policies. There was some discussion about this during the subcommittee meeting. And that is not included in the action before council today, but can be considered before next year's Community Funding Grant Program. So the action before council from the subcommittee is to adopt resolution 6602, that is approving the subcommittee recommendations for the grants for fiscal year 2020-21. And that would include amending the budget to increase the general fund grant expenditures from 206,250, which is the current amount budgeted, to 276,000 in total. And with that, I will turn it back over to the subcommittee and council unless there are questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. And I will actually put in the hands of the subcommittee, Vice Mayor Combs and Councilmember Carlton, if there was anything you want to follow up besides what's in the statement.
May I verbally hold my hand up?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to, for the sake of transparency, let people know I have volunteered with Hip Housing and the Junior League. And I've worked with Cora on the County, the Seminole County Board Against Domestic Violence. And, but I'm no longer an active member. There's not a conflict there. But I have volunteered with those organizations in the past.
I have nothing to add from the staff report, but happy to answer any questions if there are.
I have a question, and this actually came up with the subcommittee, with the Triangle Homeless Task Force that I'm on with Councilmember Mueller. And that, knowing that Life Moves and We Hope provide services to folks who are homeless in Menlo Park, I'm just curious. Life Moves received 100% of what they requested, but We Hope didn't. So I didn't know if there was any reason why. So Life Moves requested 20,000 and they received 20, or you're recommending 20,000. And We Hope requested 20,000 and they're receiving seven. So I just wasn't sure if there was any specific reason why.
Yeah, I think partly and definitely so, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Like this was the first year we received a request from We Hope. And so I think that that played into, or certainly there wasn't a request last year. And so I think that that sort of played into the, a little bit into the difference, whereas obviously there has been an ongoing relationship with Life Moves and they are a regular participant in this funding. But that says I remember it. If someone has better memory, feel free to chime in and keep me honest.
I honestly don't remember. I was on the committee, the subcommittee last year with Councilmember Carlton. So I don't remember if We Hope applied. I know that they changed their name from Project We Hope to We Hopes. I don't know if that made a difference. Councilmember Carlton, do you recall or?
If only I could turn on my computer. I'm scrambling to do that right now to get my notes. I believe that the ones that were new, we didn't give as much. I believe that was the case with this specific, with this specific donation.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Murphy already said this earlier, that Ms. Kaufman is not here. Because she may know, or I'm not sure if someone else on staff would know, if Project We Hope applied last year and then they changed their name to We Hope, or if they've never applied. Just curious. And that doesn't have to be answered this evening. I'm just curious. That was actually my only question.
We also looked at whether or not services were duplicated or available in other places. I think staff, I just want to thank staff for doing a very good job of taking a lot of information and weighing that into a very complex kind of Excel spreadsheet. And going through that with us.
Were there any other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
I just wanted to clarify for the record, because for the last six years, I've abstained from voting when it comes to Life Moves. So I used to be on the board of directors. I'm not anymore. So we'll be participating in the full vote this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
So just briefly, I was wondering if Councilmember Carlton could give an overview as to what the Junior League is doing during the pandemic, since I'm just not familiar with that.
Well, I'm not an active member of the Junior League, so I can't give you a detailed thing. What this funding is for is bringing back Art for Art's Sake at the Bellhaven School. Apparently it was fully funded previously and they lost all their funding. So it doesn't exist at that school. And this will bring it back. And so they can have, in the same way that they teach virtually other classes or have other classes in person, they will be able to bring art classes back to all the grades at Bellhaven School. But the details on how all that, I don't know, because I'm not doing it.
Good point. Thank you. That was, that gives me a really good idea. Thank you.
Sure.
But there aren't any other questions from council, I will go to public comment. Ms. Herron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G3, which is Adopt Resolution Number 6602, approving the City Council Community Funding Subcommittee's recommendations regarding the 2020-21 community funding allocation and amending the fiscal year 2020-21 budget, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and address the city council at this time. So this will be the last call for item G3 of public comment. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
I'll let Mr. Jacobson go first.
Thank you. So Madam Mayor, to answer your question, by some quick research, we were able to determine that Project We Hope has applied in the past, did not apply in the most recent year. So there were a few cases of that where organizations apply, but not every single year. And this would be one of those.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Welcome back, Councilmember Carlton. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for the sake of the record, we got a pretty large request. I think the largest request that came in came from the Menlo Park School District. And so in just to one, you know, clarify that like through this program, we actually don't have the ability to give funds to another government entity. This is specifically set up for the city to provide funds to nonprofits. Again, nonprofits who are providing services that the city doesn't provide. It could be, and I think one of the things staff is going to do going forward in reaching out to the school district, if there are sort of nonprofits that work with the school district to provide certain services, then they, those nonprofits can request funding through this mechanism. Again, the fact that the services are provided to the school is totally fine. But the requesting entity needs to be a nonprofit. And so that's just something we're going to, staff is going to engage the school district going forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Second.
So I have the motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs and seconded by City Councilmember Carlton, to adopt resolution number 6602, approving the City Council Community Funding Subcommittee's recommendations regarding the 2020-21 community funding allocation and amending the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. Any further discussion or question? Seeing none, I will call votes, City Councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item under regular business is item G4, Approve Outdoor Dining Grant Program. To introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Nick Pogaros.
That's not my screen. Somebody's still projecting. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I do not have a presentation for you this evening. However, would like to introduce the item. So this evening, staff is seeking city council approval of an outdoor dining program. This idea was first presented to the city council at your November 10 meeting, city council meeting, and we received a green light to move forward with developing the program and returning to city council for authority to launch the program with specifics regarding our partners, nonprofit partner, partners, and the various requirements and administration of the program. What I, I'm not going to walk through the details unless the council desires. Just, I would just highlight a couple of key points. First is that this action originated as in the desire to act quickly and move in a responsive manner to addressing a need that several weeks ago was less dire than it is today. As we, as you all know, we are moving into a period of that significantly restricts and prevents or recommends against the provision of dining in person, whether it be indoor or outdoor. We don't know what the future will hold. However, I think that what we anticipate is that once we return from the 21 day guidance from the states to suspend outdoor dining, we'll move back into the purple tier of the state's reactivation plan in which outdoor dining is permissible. The details here are fully up to the discretion of the city council. Staff has made several recommendations that promote some of the points that were raised by the subcommittee that where this idea had initially gained some traction. Perhaps one of the more, one of the more notable recommendations from staff, not the subcommittee, is a method to ensure that the grants are made available equally across the city. Clearly, we have a concentration of dining and eateries in our downtown area. We have had previous programs in our downtown area. However, there may be applicants or there may be eateries outside of the downtown area that are interested in pursuing this if the council gives the approval this evening. And so staff has outlined a possible procedure for accepting applications and qualifications that are determined by district. In addition to that, staff has made mention, we made mention in the reports that the council may select a different way of allocating the funds. You could focus on business areas. For example, our downtown as one area may receive one or two or however many grants the council feels or deems appropriate. I would highlight that downtown is, does straddle or portions of our downtown area straddles, it is in two different districts, District Three and District Four. And so with that, we are, we're bringing this forward to this evening so that we can move forward in an expedited manner. However, as the council has previously discussed in earlier items this evening, we do understand that there are a number of challenges and concerns, particularly in this difficult budget cycle and budget circumstance. And really, the prospect of what the future may hold and the fact that we're back effectively where we were in March in sense of, we don't know exactly where we are, although we do have hope that, and there is light at the end of the tunnel now, which we didn't have back in March. So I will leave it at that and I am happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Are there any follow up questions for Mr. Pogaros before we take public comment? Councilmember Nash.
Realizing that this came together very quickly, so you may not know the answer, but I'm wondering if we have any idea how many restaurants would meet the criteria that we've set out, including a full kitchen in each of the districts? Or even a rough number?
Yeah, I I apologize, I counsel Nash, I apologize. I do not have that information off the top of my head.
And then, thank you. And was there any consideration? Well, actually, I guess this was more in that's probably my only clarifying question. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I support doing this tonight. This is something that I would have. This is something that the council talked about doing before the pandemic is going ahead and moving forward with extending this grant program and actually putting money, though we're not doing that tonight, at some point, putting money toward actually asking our our merchants to improve their outdoor dining areas, to improve the aesthetics of them. I realized that this came forward during COVID nineteen. We're on a fast timeline. I see it as something that was always part of the plan. I'm supportive of this and actually would go ahead and make the motion before this evening with the with the recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. We need to take public comment on this item first. So if there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and go to public comment. Okay, Ms. Haren.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item G four, approve outdoor dining grant program, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. So our first public commenter is Don Cecil. Don, we'd like to unmute yourself. You may address the city council at this time.
Good member, good evening, members of the city council. Don Cecil here, representing Sam Seda. I I'm here to give public comment, but also to address any questions that staff may need to punt to us in terms of implementation or need. I would say, Councilmember Nash, one of the things that we would do is we would work with the county environmental services department to pull the list of all the restaurants in the city of Menlo Park that have a restaurant permit through the county office of environmental services. Excuse me. That's one of the things that we would go to in addition to any business license registry that you you all keep on a city level. So that's one of the ways that we can cross check to determine who might have a full kitchen to answer that question. I would just say that the clock is ticking, and Dr. Morrow has staved off a shutdown for as long as he can, as long as Louise Rogers can. But once the state does determine that we're in a sheltering place, their ability to prevent that goes away. Your restaurants and restaurants everywhere are hanging on by their fingernails. You have mostly family owned, immigrant owned, minority owned, and women owned businesses, often run by families that have put everything on the line to survive the pandemic. And so I applaud all of you as the only city that I know of so far. Excuse me, to put this type of money forward to help your restaurants. So my hat is off to you, and Sam Seda looks forward to working with your city staff to help make this a reality. And again, any questions that I can address, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Melanie Roth. Melanie, it looks like you might have gone offline. Give her just a few more seconds here to see if she can reestablish her connection. As we wait, if there is any other public commenters on item G four, approve outdoor dining client program. Final call for public comment. Unfortunately, it looks like Melanie Roth is still offline. Unable to communicate that with this person. So Mayor Taylor, if you'd like to make.
Thank you, Ms. Haren. No any any other questions or comments? Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. Um, I had spoken to to Don Cecil about this and have spoken to Melanie. Melanie's for those who don't know, she owns Refuge. And we are so lucky to have Refuge in our in our city, and we're we're just blessed with with a lot of great restaurants. And and I'm so happy that we're moving forward in this to to keep them in business, not only because you know, as as Mr. Cecil pointed out, you know, this isn't McDonald's or some big chain, you know, these are these are people in our community that are running restaurants. And it's important to keep them in business, not only for themselves, not only for the people working for them, but for the vibrancy and quality of life of the people within our cities as well. And one of the concerns that I had and I spoke to to Don about is doing it the way it's laying laid out, it's going district by district. And that's going to make it a lot longer time period. And I'm not sure that's I think that's where Councilmember Nash was going with with asking how many restaurants are in each one. He had pointed out that this is going to slow things down immensely, and and it's kind of critical ironically to do all the building now because now everything's closed down. There's not the problem of what do you do with people eating when you need to build? At least everybody's gone by definition. So everyone wants to run with scissors to get it built now while while things are closed down. And instead of having it divided up by districts, having it divided up by experience and use. And and the reason I contacted him is is to make to to follow in on on a lot of the questions that we asked about how are you going to define which restaurants in this? And he's going to take direction from us. And if we say, look, we're opening up generally to all the restaurants in the city. Take direction from us that we want to make sure that we have cities and restaurants in Bellhaven as well as you know, throughout the whole city. And he said he can take that direction without having to go through a structure that slows things down. The only structure he recommended, which I agree with, is and I think it's in the report too, saying that that the restaurants that haven't received any grant funding get the first pass. Because we want to make sure that that those restaurants are taken care of. And only at the the second pass, we we come through to the restaurants that are expanding. But I'm I'm very grateful to Sam Seda for stepping up to do the administration on this for for not much. And I can tell you from the restaurants I've spoken to, not just Refuge, this is this is a lifesaver for them to be able to put something up in terms of a platform, in terms of a stable tent. And I've spoken with a lot of our our planning staff who drive the restaurants crazy, telling them, no, 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 not that tent. You have to do this kind of thing. But it's it's great for everyone to make sure that the things that get built are stable, they are safe in a in a wind, they're not going to fall down. And I'm I'm pleased to see this move forward. I see Ray's got his hand up, so I'll let Ray speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
I'm just ready to make a motion.
We have one more public comment to take.
I was able to connect with Melanie and we've had another hand raised. We do have two public comments in queue. We're ready to take this. Thank you. So Melanie Roth, would you like to unmute yourself? You may address the city council at this time.
Good. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. We are Matt Levin and Melanie Roth, owners of Refuge at one, one, four, three Crane Street. We strongly encourage you to vote in favor of approving the outdoor dining grant program. As you know, our restaurant, as well as many others, have been hit hard by the COVID nineteen pandemic. We have been limited to takeout operations only in additions to our five outdoor tables. They currently sit in the three parking spots in front of our business that the city has permitted us to use with the provided concrete barriers. Outdoor dining appears to be the only on premises dining that will be allowed in our county.
I'm going to finish it. This is Melanie Roth. That will be allowed in our county for some time while we await vaccine distribution and the market to return to normal. If we were able to build a permanent street parklet with the outdoor dining grant, our business would be able to properly compete with other restaurants on Santa Cruz Avenue who have already received assistance from Menlo Park prior to the pandemic for permanent and professional parklets. These grant funds will enable us to build a more professional, comfortable, safer, and modern structure for our guests. All we are asking for is the opportunity to compete fairly. This is vital and a crucial step to sustaining our future business in Menlo Park through twenty twenty one and beyond. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you both for your comment, and that does conclude public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haren. And I believe we already have a motion in the second on the floor. Great. We have two hands, Councilmember Nash and then Vice Mayor Combs.
So my question is again, looking long term. Right now, and what we're spending money on and how long it will last. Basically, right now, we have restaurants that were in part of the first grant, and they are rolling off. And we have essentially said with them and the other restaurants who've recent more recently created parklets that we will be reviewing them after Labor Day. So it seems to me that are we making a commitment at this point to continue because to put up twenty thousand or basically a hundred thousand dollars and then have them come down at Labor Day seems like it might not be the best investment. That's question number one. And I guess I would say I would be perfectly happy to have them continue. I just would like some certainty there.
Mr. Pogaros, may I?
There we go. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Nash. I the the staff report was intentionally written to address temporary accommodations, and it was and in part that's due that that is intended to minimize the number of the the number of resources necessary to move quickly on this particular initiative. So to to the question or some of the comments that that the council or that that Councilmember Carlton has made in the motion, we do need clarification if the city council wants these to be permanent. And I'll need to defer to our planning folks on whether that is practical within the timeframe that that we're looking or what a what a reasonable timeframe is. And then secondarily, how the grants would be allocated, if they are allocated by district or first come, first served, focused on downtown or specific areas. So those are the two items that we would need clarification on in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Vice Mayor Combs, did you have a question?
No, I'm I'm fine for now. I'll pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton.
Um, I know the restaurants I've spoken to would like it to be permanent. Talk me through that. Is that problematic? Is that going to make substantial delays? Or is it better for them to build something wood with a view to making it more permanent? I mean, I think they'd like to spend the twenty thousand dollars, match it with ten or twenty thousand dollars more and make something that looks really nice in front of their place. But is 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 that going to take much longer, Nick? Or talk me through the two scenarios? Because I know that they would prefer to have.
Yes. And I will be the first to admit that we're now venturing outside of my area of expertise. I do not want to commit our staff to any timeframes. If it is a long term facility, I I frankly don't know what the timeframe is to turn that all around. So we would probably want to explore that. We would definitely want to explore that a little further and.
Well, what's the difference then? Is it is it one's concrete and one's wood? How are how are we making a definition between permanence and non-permanence? Because as I remember, the first round, we said we were going to do as an experiment as it was. So I'm not sure where we draw the line between what's defined as permanent and what isn't.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a legitimate question, Councilmember Carlton. And as as stated in the staff report, the intent was to have temporary structures that would allow dining, outdoor dining, outdoor dining during the winter months. So that would be protection, heat protection from rain and wind predominantly.
Okay. And 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 flat place where they can they can eat. Because I ate at Refuge the other day with my daughter, and my daughter was complaining the table was sideways. So it didn't bother me, but I know it does bother some people. So I think it's important to have that flat as as much as it is also some protection.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Combs.
You can go. You're you're going to say something.
Well, actually, I was going to go and ask Councilmember Mueller, because I saw you had your hand up and then you disappeared. And so I was going to check in with you. So then I went to Vice Mayor Combs.
Okay, well, then I'll I'll go. So I I'm supportive of of this. Again, like I think someone has to walk me through like exactly because I wasn't I wasn't clear after that exchange, what we have to say or do. And so please sort of outline for me everything we have to do, like so supportive. I know one of the issues is this, the sort of distribution mechanism. Right now, there is a priority on some some equity between the 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 council districts. Again, I'm I'm big and supportive of of us sort of embracing the reality of of being in in districts and that there being some some equity as we look at sort of the distribution of city resources across districts. I don't know, though, if this approach goes a step too far, because you know, the downtown you know, drag is has a concentration of of businesses. And I don't think if we concentration of 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 sort of restaurant establishments. And so I I don't know if if we should try to force this this equity of resources in this situation. There there are definitely going to be some situations where I want to. But but to me, I I think, again, like you you know, for the the downtown district, there there are just more more restaurants and and again, and and I think we should should not, again, like I say, try to force some some sort of equity of distribution in in this situation. I don't then though want to sort of open up a can of worms. I don't know what then what is a sort of mechanism that is 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 would be better. I I don't have that at at the top of my my head. But again, like I said, I I just want to be clear about like what what, other than sort of expressing support. Again, like I would be open to something that provided some flexibility regarding sort of the the district distribution model. And as as far as this sort of permanence, I I do think in in, you know, in theory, like you know, we're we're sort of making obviously a commitment to these being more sort of sort of long term than short term, or at least medium term by 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 this investment. I don't know if I if if you, you know, said I didn't have to, I don't know if I would want to specifically sort of tie my hands at this moment to some sort of specific sort of timeline commitment. But but obviously, as we as we invest more more money, our own money into this, obviously, I think we're we're saying that obviously, we're committed to this to for 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 a little bit of of the long term. And so that that's where that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And Councilmember Mueller, did you still have a comment?
No, I'm just ready to vote. I'm like, I think, you know, I'm just ready to vote. Like, I was ready to vote at the beginning. I'm ready to vote now, and I'm not sure what's going to change as we continue to discuss it. Like, I think we have a we have something that's been well framed by staff, and I'm not sure that we can go outside the limits of that this evening. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Nash.
Sure, I'm I'm willing to support this, and I I agree completely with Councilmember Combs that it's oversubscriptive with the the way it it ties things to the borders of of. And I I was going to call back. And I was going to call back Don Cecil, if you wouldn't mind. I believe we can give direction as, as they implement this to say, you know, be flexible, but you have direction to make sure that if Cafe Zoe wants to do it, they have access to it as, as much as, as Refuge or someone on the other side of town. And I don't know if John wants to speak to that. I'm completely supportive of this. If we, if we give him that, that flexibility. And I, I really, I don't want to tie us into, paint us into a corner. I have a feeling this is going to be used pretty quickly by a lot of the restaurants that haven't received money previously. But I don't know if Don is there, if he wants to address that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton, and he actually texted me and asked if he could speak again. I'm comfortable with that. Does anybody have any issue with that? Okay, Ms. Heron, do you mind?
Yes, Don, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you very much. You know, that, that countdown clock of public comment always makes me nervous, so I don't want to break that rule. But at the same time, I want to support Nick and the staff recommendation here. I, I think it's important to recognize that no matter what color tier we happen to be in as a county, or how broadly vaccination takes place, or whether we're in winter and summer, I would say that it's going to be well into, if not the end of 2021, before your restaurants have the customer base that feels safe to go back inside. So even if they can do indoor dining again, you will have people who feel more comfortable sitting outside, and their viability is really tied to when they are, are able to operate inside, also continuing to have that outdoor dining option. And it is a level playing field, more when everyone who can do a more permanent, safe parklet that has lighting and seating and heat lamps. It's a level playing field if the restaurant next door has that, and they do not. And I also think that, I understand and I, I support this concept of wanting to find equity across your districts. I guess I would encourage you to maybe give direction that, to the extent that there are restaurants who would qualify and can apply, our goal would be to fund improvements across each of the five council districts. But it may not be that there is equal funding that occurs across each of the five council districts. So I think it's a, I think it's a great goal to want to make sure that no corner of the city is left out of this program. But your districts are really based about, based upon the idea of dividing a population and not necessarily a universe of restaurants. So you do have more restaurants in certain places than you do in others. So a little flexibility in that, I think, will make the program more successful. I think the flexibility in the amount of the grant is a great thing. I will caution you that this $100,000 will go faster than any of you actually think it will go. And the need is tremendous, and this will be a great down payment on that need, but the need will exist after we've given out the last dollar. And I think the other thing that is, is exceedingly helpful and important, especially because I think this will last beyond 21 days, unfortunately. So you have this window where if we can support the city in getting this up and running, and we can get people to opt in, and we can get your hard-working city staff to add one more thing to their plate, deeming this essential construction will be an essential piece of success for this. So when we, when we go into the shelter-in-place mode, as we expect we will at some point when the state tells us to, if, if city staff believes that it's the prudent thing to do, allowing this construction to take place during shelter-in-place will allow a business who benefits from this program, or any other restaurant who may opt to pay for it on their own, to get the construction done while no one is looking to sit in these outdoor parklets, because all they can do is take out according to the state shelter-in-place orders. So to the extent that, you know, this can be deemed essential construction, and the permitting can be, can take place, and your, you know, your, your planning department will allow this construction to occur, that would be a really good companion to offering this grant program. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Cecil, Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I actually am more comfortable because it sounds like the council is, I believe, in agreement that districting may not be the best way to go, although we do want to try and spread out the resources. So that, I guess my question to, for Councilman, for Mr. Cecil, is how do you, and is, will you be the one who's actually making the decisions on the restaurants? How do we, how will this actually play out? When I read the staff report, it sounded, at that point, it was like one in each district and it's first come, first served, and that really concerned me, how that actually works. We are only talking about, I'm assuming each restaurant will probably be able to use the full 20,000, so we are only talking about five restaurants. So how, how does this work? And then, so how does, how do you envision this actually? Restaurants being chosen?
Sure. So should council approve this tonight? I think we would quickly set up a meeting with Nick, and whomever from the city staff side would want to be a part of that discussion, and we would actually kind of flesh out these details. So we're going to, we're going to work with the city to help us identify those restaurants that would qualify for this. That's a combination of your on-the-ground knowledge, your own business license database, and plus looking to the county environmental health services to help us figure out, you know, who has that full kitchen operating permit. And then from there, we're going to see who doesn't have a parklet, who would, you know, within the city's guidelines, be able to construct a parklet in the public right-of-way or whatever space they might have. I think I would want to nuance the, have you received a previous grant? I'm not sure I would preclude a business that might have received a San Mateo County Strong Grant back in April from participating in this program. But the Board of Supervisors has allocated $3.5 million to the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center, and they are working in very specific zip codes, which do include parts of Menlo Park, to give out grants ranging from $2,500 to $25,000. So if there is a restaurant who is actively participating in that grant program right now, then I do think we have to consider not double-dipping, so to speak, and saving your $100,000 for a business who's getting nothing right now. And then from there.
I was just talking about the people who'd received the outdoor dining grant before.
Correct, and we would back that in as well.
Right.
And then I think from there, we would want to work with your city staff to identify, this is the universe of restaurants that should be able to apply. We'll figure out how to get the application in their hands. We'll help the city vet those applications. And then we're going to hand the San Mateo Credit Union a list of disbursements that they will then take your $100,000 wire transfer and disperse that money out through a docu-sign process to the restaurants that we help. And that's where that processing fee comes in at $10,000. It's the credit union's processing fee, which is, you know, like 1% and almost nothing. Sam Seda is not taking a management fee of any sort on this. We are in the business of saving every small business we can during this pandemic, so. Some of this may feel squishy and not quite defined, Councilmember Nash, but we're going to put our heads together with your great professional staff and make sure that we, we do the best we can with this money, balancing, you know, transparency, accuracy, and expediency.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. A couple of comments. First of all, just, it's 10% would be administrative fee, which I'm not quibbling about, but just to set the record straight, the $10,000 of $100,000. Having said that, I'm actually, again, more comfortable hearing this. I was concerned that we'd be off to the races tomorrow with some applications or something. So it sounds like a measured application process. I, but I believe we have several restaurants in the city who don't have full kitchens. Two that come to mind immediately are Cafe Zoe, I don't believe has a full kitchen, and Mardini, I don't believe has a full kitchen. I may be wrong, but I'm just thinking as far as, do we want, you know, I'm not going to say one way or the other, just that's one of the restrictions right now. When we're talking about, I've had questions, well, in fact, it was at CC, on CCIN, whether or not restaurants who've already got parklet set up, whether they would be eligible for the funding. It makes sense to me that they are eligible for the funding, but if they have received an outdoor grant already, that they would not, they would be at the end of the line. I don't know what others feel about that, but that. And then, I guess, on the long-term, short-term, or long-term, permanent, I don't think we can make anything permanent, because we're about to go hopefully, hopefully into the downtown specific plan and looking at it, and we have no idea what that's going to bring. But I'm hoping that we can make some decision that we will be, that this will be a longer parklet setup than Labor Day, if we in fact invest this money in parklets. So I don't know that we need to make a decision tonight, but I would certainly say that we should, I would hope that we would have them for two, two years or so, but not in a permanent status where we would have concrete down, because we don't know what the, what the future, what the future holds. And I guess I wish there was some way we could do something which included more businesses than just five restaurants. And was there any thought to doing something? How, how was the 20,000 for five, well, I guess 20,000 for five was $100,000? Came up with that, but was there any thought to doing anything else that might be more inclusive of other businesses in the city, small businesses, and possibly with a smaller, giving smaller grants for more, more businesses and expanding the types of businesses? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Please, please catch me if I forget any of your questions. I was trying to keep notes there, but I, I lost track at the point. To Mr. Cecil's point, we, without regard to the value of the grant, unless it's insanely low, we expect the funds to be oversubscribed and in high demand. And so the proposal before the city council was intended to take, to the greatest extent possible, take out the, the challenges of balancing for, let's just say we get, let's say we get 10 applications in the downtown area, and, you know, 10 applications spread out through the city, that may not even be possible. But just off the top of my head, let's just use that for discussion purposes. How do we, how do we then evaluate and create, and prioritize the distribution of funds? And if we only have five grants? The, the district approach was one way to ensure that sort of, if there is a restaurant in the Sharon Heights area or in, on Willow Road in the Bayfront District One area, that, that those, that that would take some of that, that discretion away and ensure that those businesses receive priority. I, I would say that from, in that regard, it would be entirely sort of manageable to have the first round be by district, and then the subsequent rounds just a free-for-all, if that's one area, or, you know, and again, I'm not proposing that, I am proposing that the council consider district distribution. That was the way to make it equal across the districts. If that's not practical, and that's not the council's desire, staff can entirely review the application process and work with Mr. Cecil and, and Sam Seda to identify how we would evaluate the applicants. To the, to the question of the actual amount, each, each applicant is, so there is a, the more applications we have, the more expensive this whole thing will be, just frankly, from with regard. So if we have a $10,000 grant, we're doing 10, we're doing double the amount of work, and there is a risk that that will slow this process down. And so when we were looking at, when I was looking at round numbers, $20,000 grant for, as an assistance, as well as provision for, if a, if a business only wanted $10,000, then we could potentially look at the next applicant. That's where the $20,000 came from. I am concerned, just given the conversation and the feedback that we're hearing from council, that this is one of the, one of the challenges with a permanent construction or a more permanent construction, something that goes beyond the initial thought of carrying restaurants through to better weather season, is the, or just the approval processes necessary for parking, removal, et cetera, that may or may not be, or most likely is, is in consideration, as well as potential street closures and, and whatever, whatever other, whatever else may come about. And so I will be the first to admit that what's before the council is not perfect. It did not go through the laborious weeks and weeks of discussion and analysis on staff's side. That was largely, that was my, if we wanted to move, and we wanted to move quickly, then I, it was my sort of assessment that that would, that, that we would have to take a little bit of a risk by way of how the program would be administered in coordination with a third party. Clearly, Mr. Cecil and Sam Seda will have, will do what the council requests, but it's my responsibility to ensure that they are doing what the council requests. And in order to do that, I need clear direction from council. And so I do need some clarification on whether or not the funds will be prioritized in any way, or if it's first come, first served. And the more we, the more, unfortunately, I think the fewer, there's a, there's a fine line between releasing constraints and imposing constraints, where that gray area just is, can be rife with problems and, and challenges. And so I just want to be mindful of that. So what's presented to you this evening is, is, is very much a, a, a product that if we're willing to sort of do things in a slightly different way, it may work if there is a desire to more fully explore all of the various possibilities. I would, I would be the first to say that I think I would need to work with staff and come back to council on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Figueros. I appreciate the clarifying statement, and I go with the first part that you said. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just, so, and maybe you covered this and I missed it, like, is there a classification of business that we know that sort of would be inclusive of establishments like Cafe Zoe that don't have full kitchens, but are, you know, eating establishments? Like, right, is, is that a classification that you then could, could incorporate into, into this?
Of course. I, I mean, they're, they're, the possibilities are endless. I don't have those with, I don't have those handy, which is one reason why I would want to go back and, and talk to our, our, our planning folks on it.
Yeah, so I'll just chime in as a way of trying to kind of hone in and get us to some place like that may, you know, not require a lot of back and forth, given that, that the time is, is, is an issue. Well, I would be supportive of, of sort of the district framing on this, this, this first go around, even, even with, you know, my, my concerns that maybe it's too prescriptive. It does go to the issue of, of sort of at least trying to bring some, some equity and distribution. And so, again, I would be willing, just, just for the sake of, of, to your earlier point, Mr. Figuerres, providing some sort of guidelines of, of, of some sense of, of, you know, it being fair in some way. I think I'd also, so I would be fine with, with keeping that, you know, in, in place, even given my concerns. I, I would actually like to see the amount reduced to $10,000 as, as a maximum instead of 20, just as a way of, of those are, are then five more restaurants. I know it, it increases administrative costs and, and, and the administrative process. But, but I think the ability of being able to to provide funding to, to five more, or double the number of businesses would be worth that, that trade off. I'd also like to say, and again, I appreciate that, like, businesses are struggling, but I'd also like to see scenarios where you know, the businesses are putting some money into this, right? They, they're, there's some money on the table from them. And it's not just sort of a, a kind of a city grant for, for this. And, and again, to my earlier point, I would like to see something where a classification that isn't just full kitchens and so that we can, you know, include establishments with, with more limited, limited kitchens, which are like, again, if we're, I know we tend to use Cafe Zoe example a lot, but it, they don't, I know they don't have a full kitchen, right? But, but they are very much the hub of, of the Willow's community and important, a certain important part and play that, that same sort of role that, that we see as being the value of, of these eating establishments by which the value that, that, that we, as a community, see value in it and want to support. You know, they're playing that as much in, in the Willow's community as, as we see it being played by, by establishments with, with, with full kitchens in other areas of the city. So that's where I'm landing. My, my goal was to, to try to sort of move us possibly closer to a emotion. I don't know if I was a successful in, in that effort, but, but that, that's where I'm at, as I, as I sit here.
If I may, I just want to make sure that I've, I have council member, Vice Mayor Combs, three sort of modifications to the recommendation. The first would be to reduce the grant from, the maximum grant from 20,000 to $10,000 to make the kitchen requirement less restrictive and to, to require some form of matching funds. I think the first two are straightforward enough. I would just need to know the, what the specifics are on the matching.
No, no, no matching requirement. I was just saying by, in, in theory, by reducing the amount we're, we're, we're contributing. There was just this idea that, that the, the restaurants would have sort of more skin in the game, that they're not just coming to gain a gift, but no official matching that I was, I was, I was asking for, again, just by a way of reducing the, the maximum. My thinking is that, that that will, will happen. But yeah, but those, so those were the, you know, opening up the kitchen requirement and, and reducing the maximum out to 10K are the only, my only ask. And like I said, I would be willing to go with the district framing with, with my concerns, just, just, just to see how this, this, it plays out.
And if I may, I mean, one option also is to do the first round by district and then open it up after that, if that, if the council, if that's something the council's of
Yeah. And I would be totally supportive of which is laid out in the, in the staff report, right? That, that, that option and that, that I would be, be supportive of.
Councilmember Carlton?
So I'm, I'm taking notes here. And I'm, I'm happy to have it not be a, a full kitchen. We all love Cafe Zoe. And we want to make sure that's, that's put forward. 10,000 is fine in terms of being able to, there are going to be more people probably applying. I did hear Don Cecil say it would be good to give flexibility because there might be cases where 20,000 is warranted and 10,000 is warranted, but I'm, I'm good with 10,000. That's fine. And, and Don Cecil, Mr. Cecil specifically said, and the reason I questioned him in the first place is that he's, he works for the, the SAMC, which is a county organization. He's an intelligent individual. He knows how to take direction. If we give direction saying that we want to make sure that, that all restaurants across the, the city are considered and are represented in this. He assured me, as he assured us all when he was speaking, that he's fully capable. You all know, this is my baby that I've been running to, to get done. I will vote against this if it goes to districts. I feel very strongly that the whole idea of putting it, putting that restriction as it goes through, you know, we can say we want to make sure, we've got 10 places, we want to make sure at least one place, at least one restaurant is represented in each, each district. I haven't even gone through to figure out if every district has a restaurant applying. But that, that whole process is being put forward is bureaucratic at best in terms of slowing things down and going through. And that's, that's what Don Cecil just told us. He is capable of, of taking that direction and, and hearing us, which we very clearly put forward, saying, we're putting this forward across all the places, all the places that apply, all the restaurants in the city. We want to make sure that that's represented across the city. He can do that. It, it doesn't have to be micromanaged. I see Councilmember Mueller has his hand up.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I'm, I saw where I'm having difficulty is the $10,000. It seems like we just have it. It's not really based on construction costs or I mean, I'm just not really sure where we got the number. $20,000. So I know from when we did the prior, the prior work, that it's not cheap to do these out, to, to do this. And candidly, I don't want it to look cheap. I actually like, I actually would rather we do it. And if we run out, then they come back to us and then we talk about doing more. So I would rather, I don't, I would rather not drop it to the $10,000. I'd rather leave it up at the $20,000. And then, and then if it's a problem, then have folks come back to us. But I, I don't want, and I also think, I also don't want there to be an issue where people are trying to make $10,000 work and it's just not, not good construction. It's cheap looking. It's, maybe the list could go on and on. Like, I don't know. I just don't know where we're getting the $10,000. I understand, I understand the intent that we want to make those dollars stretch, but I just, I'm not comfortable just having it tonight. So on the district issue, I think I, you know, if it's something that people require to vote for it, then fine, but I'm, I'm not sure. I actually think that what we need to try to do is just encourage people who want to take advantage of, to take advantage of it. If the money runs out, have people come back to us more. Right? So, I mean, if, what I would, what I would go with is the first round could be by district for a specified time limit. And after that time limit, if people in the district, if there is no application, then that round is over. So that's, I think, how I would approach it because what I would hate to do is have money set aside for district that then is never touched by anybody while there are, while there are applicants who are waiting to grab it. And so maybe what we can say is first round by district. And then it's, but at some point, if an applicant doesn't come forward, that money comes out of the district process. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, I, I'm not sure if there was a a miscommunication somewhere. I believe that Councilmember Carlton said that she was interested in not having it districted. And so I'm wondering if that changes your position at all.
I think, but is there, is, is there support on council right now to have a district? I thought someone's, I thought there was some, someone person besides other councilmember Carlton who was interested in it being districted.
Vice Mayor Combs?
I said that I, I have reservations, but I could be supportive of it if it, if it provided staff, again, the necessary framing, but I, I'm actually not a fan of it.
So because it was a point of discussion on two council members, that's why I commented on it, Councilmember Nash. I'm happy. So that being said, if there's support on council to look at districts, I would ask just that there be, that be looked at in the first round or that there be some time limit associated with that, just so that money doesn't sit there for a long period of time while the pandemic continues without anyone applying for it. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And I think that will be determined on outreach as far as who would be, who would apply for it, would be determined by the outreach, the level of outreach. Because I can think of, the reason why I am, I'm on the fence about supporting by districts is because I can think of three districts that need it, that I know that need it. And so the other two may not. And so I understand about not leaving money on the table. $100,000 would go extremely quickly. I would like this to be flexible and something easy to do and not complicated. So that's what I would like to see, but the more I listen, the more complicated it gets. At any rate, Councilmember Nash, you had your hand up.
I did. Thank you. Um, I'm actually, I won't go there again, but I'm very confused about what we're talking about with districts right now. Okay. Another thought is to actually do a lottery. I have not thought this through, but it's another way to do it where we could you know, and perhaps have Sam Seda make sure that there is at least some sort of distribution. But I, I guess I am I totally understand the idea of wanting to get this out there and get it done quickly. I am really feeling like this is half baked. And I'm, I wish it wasn't the end of the year where this is essentially our last council meeting before the new year, where we actually have, will be doing business because this really does not seem like we're quite ready for prime time. One question that I have is, which we haven't discussed, and I guess, of course, Sam Seda can will do things right, but we have not even talked to, in the staff report, it says that people get their money after they, the completion of their, after the receipt of occupancy approval. And yet we were talking, when we were talking about people getting it upfront. There's that discrepancy, I believe. There's also, what exactly is this paying for? Is this just paying for parklet and anything that has to do with outdoor dining? How broad do we go? How much do we even want to say as far as how broad we go? But I'm just and going back to the whole amount, I am more comfortable with $10,000, although I know that that won't cover the costs, but being able to help 10 businesses, I think that there will be a, a significant demand. And finally, I am I am uncomfortable with the idea that we can keep going back to the well at this point, given the city's coffers, given the economic situation and given the fact that we cut staff, we've not given salary increases. And yet it seems like it's, we are very definitely, there's a need out there, but I also, I am concerned about the message that we're sending and how we are deciding to spend our money. I think that what we have done tonight and doing $100,000 is great. I'm not sure we're ready to do it, but to start anticipating that we can come back and back, I'm uncomfortable with that. And I'll stop now.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. There's a, I believe it was Harvard Business Review study that I read a couple of months ago that looked into cities that had actually spent money in the last downturn and on projects like this. And they found that they were like 400 times better when they came out of the dip, if they had spent the money rather than not spending money in the downturn. It's actually during the downturn, that's why we save our, why we save our money. That's why we have this is, is so that we can step in and make investments like this. So it's, it actually is exactly in the, and when we talk about what this is signaling, this is signaling support for our businesses, support for our people, support for the quality of life to keep great restaurants and cafes and things available in, in Menlo Park. So I just wanted to, when you were talking about what does it signal, it signals, it signals good things. And Sam Seda has a long, very good history in administering things like this, as you heard when, when Mr. Cecil was speaking, you know, he's a professional with this. So I feel like he, he does know what he's doing. He knows how to take direction. He knows how to do something like this because he's, he's done it. They, they are distributing many different funds for many different uses and across the county right now. And they're really the experts at it. So I see Ray has his hand up, so I'll let him speak.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah. So, I mean, going back to when we did the budget, after we got done balancing the budget, you all may remember that I actually made a motion for us to take, I think it was a million dollars out of reserve specifically to do projects in the downtown, racial equity, other things like this. The reason why I did that was for exactly instances like this and what Councilmember Carlton just talked about. We cut our budget down so that we could be flexible, so that we could provide aid when we needed to do important projects and then also provide stimulus to go ahead and bring our economy back by keeping these small businesses, by providing them the support so that they can maintain themselves. It keeps, it does, it keeps, it just keeps our economic ecosystem afloat in the city and gets us back to that much faster, to having revenues come in, so then we can hire people back. If we, and so, you know, there is, I have no problem with making an investment and also saying to folks, you know, as we go through policy decisions, okay, let's go ahead and invest in this area. Let's invest in this area. Let's do the things we need to bring our, to keep our small businesses, the ones that are going to make it afloat. Because it's going to be a lot harder to, it's just, well, number one, we want to keep them afloat. And number two, the sicker the system gets, the harder it is going to be for it to recover. And so I don't have a problem saying if this program is successful, people should come back to us and we should look at whether or not more stimulus is going to be required to keep this economy, to keep our city economy going. The, the issue between, if you guys aren't comfortable with 20, if you want to go ahead and have staff create some sort of baseline metric where it's like, okay, base is 10, but there's going to be discretion to go up to 15 based on size and go up to 20 past that, based on whether or not there's other special conditions. And, you know, then that's fine. But I think to say a rigid 10, just out the gate, I think, I honestly think it's going to preclude some people from doing the project. Because when times were good, when times were, were good, we had, we, and we were giving money to people with a match at the height of the economy, people were like, I don't want to do the match. And now we're talking to people in the middle of a pandemic, when they don't have, when like they're hoping people are going to come to, to, to sit outside. We're going to say, yeah, you, you know, you got to put, here's 10, but you're going to got to put in 10. They're going to be like, I guess I'm just going to do takeout because right now I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to pay for this person who works here. Right? Like I just, either we're really truly going to try to make this work for people and have flexibility for our professional staff and the, the people working on it to do that. Or I, and then the other, the other candid thing is, you know, we don't want it to be opulent, but we don't want it to look like garbage either. Like, we really don't. Like, we really don't, because people, guess what? Like, people aren't going to go to that. Like, they're not going to go, they're not going to feel comfortable sitting in the out town and the, in like the plywood, on the plywood with, you know, we already candidly, if you, if you go and you look at other cities and what they've done with their outdoor dining area, we're already cutting it close. We're already cutting it close with the way we're doing it and the way other people have designed theirs. So, you know, I'm fine saying to staff, look, start at a baseline 10, but have flexibility going for 20, use your discretion. And I actually am fine with saying to people, look, if this is successful, bring it back to us and bring us more. So, and I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, in support of Council, Councilmember Mueller's original urgency to get this voted on, because we all generally agree, I, I either want to confirm these changes with him as a second or I'll make a friendly, friendly, friendly substitute motion, or we can add it to your motion if you want it to be your, your motion, Councilmember Mueller, I don't mind either way. But I would, I would move that we adopt this program, deem it essential construction. I'm looking at my notes. Deem it essential construction. We don't require that it has a full kitchen. We have it up to $10,000 with the discretion to have less, if that's appropriate, with the direction that we would like to include as many restaurants as possible. Not to restrict districts, have it open, but with the direction to ensure that the people that receive it are represented across the city in the appropriate districts and, but have a first round of the people who have not previously received an outdoor dining grant in the, in the past. Would, would you agree with all that, Ray, or?
I'm fine with all of that. The one thing I want to make sure, though, so I'll take all of that as a friendly amendment, but we, our mayor Taylor is so understanding in facilitating all of this talking. I want to make sure that she gets a chance to weigh in, because we've all gone back and forth. And I, I don't remember Mayor Taylor weighing in yet, and I want to make sure she gets her opportunity to, before I say, yeah, let's move.
Oh, well, Councilmember Mueller, I actually did. I just, I don't talk as much. But essentially, I'm, I'm supportive of the idea of districts, but I realize that not all districts have a need. But I can name three right now that I believe that does, but I don't want that to be something that prevents moving forward. I, I want the staff and Sam Seda to have the flexibility they need to make this successful. So I'm trying not to put too many restrictions on there. I am supportive of giving less of an amount, if 20,000 isn't needed, 10,000 is. So I just want to see something move forward, because our small businesses, not just the restaurants, need some support from the city. And so I see this pilot, this is not a pilot program. I see this as a program to help move, move something forward, so we know what to do with the next round, because there will be a next round.
So thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I did remember you saying about the, the three districts. I just wasn't, I just didn't remember you saying that you were fine with us moving forward. So with that being the case, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and, and accept the friendly amendments. And, and, and Councilmember Carlton and Madam Mayor, if the, if there is a second to the friendly amendments, we're good to go.
I'm the second.
Thank you. And just for clarification, City Councilmember Carlton, you had mentioned deeming them as essential construction. And just for clarity for staff, if we can get a better understanding of what that is.
Don, Don Cecil brought that forward as something that the city can do that ensures that if there's, with the construction, you would have like one or two people who socially distance, who wear masks, but that the construction could continue in a, in a shutdown, because it's an essential thing to be done while no one's eating at the restaurant. He, he explained that that was something that we could do.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. So I'm going to restate this motion. I hope I have captured it all. Of course, if not, please do let me know. I have a motion by City Councilmember Mueller, a second by City Councilmember Carlton, to approve the outdoor dining grant program, deeming it an essential construction, removing the full kitchen requirement, grant to be up to $10,000 and to include as, as many restaurants as possible, not to distribute equally to the districts, but understand the needs of each district and have a preference to those businesses who have not yet received previous grants. Have I omitted or misinterpreted anything in that motion?
Councilmember Carlton, was your friendly amendment that the grant was up to $10,000?
No, up to 20.
Up to $20,000?
Perfect. So it has been updated for up to $20,000, but to include as many restaurants as possible.
And that's, and that's giving direction that if it's, if it's appropriate to give more 10, that's fabulous. In some cases, it really should be 10. I think that's clear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just so we're clear, so I'm, I'm not going to be supportive. I, I think, again, like the, I, I think, yeah, the $10,000 is sort of a random number, but the $20,000 is sort of a random number, too. And, and to me, it was, it was about providing a program that, that has the ability to help more, more businesses. At this point, it becomes a lottery, like which businesses win the lottery. And I want to make it less about a lottery and more about a partnership, right, between the businesses and the city helping out. And so we don't have to discuss it. I'm just telling you where, where I'm, I'm coming from and why, why I can't, I can't be, I can't be supportive of it. And, and again, and, and from, from my perspective, it, it should be an effort to partner with businesses and not a, a sort of a grant. And, and I think that you, you have to sort of do some sort of cost benefit analysis. And for me, that, that benefit weighs into trying to be able to positively impact more businesses. And so, and so that, that's, that's, that's where I am.
Why don't we do this then, Mayor Combs, I mean, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Combs, why don't we do this? Why don't we say, why don't we say that it's $10,000? But, but in January, after this has started, there will be a check-in within three weeks' time to see how many businesses have actually applied for the $10,000. And if people haven't, then we can discuss at that time as a council whether to raise the amount.
I'd be totally supportive of that.
I, I just wanted to follow up. $20,000 isn't random. And the research that we did, when we, remember this is the second time we've done this program, that was determined, it was determined that it was going to cost like 30,000 or 40,000, and it was matched. And that's how they came up with the 20,000 grant that we put forward. Because remember, it's not just the platform that you're building, it's also the lights and the heaters, and there are a lot of other things. But the, the $20,000 wasn't random, it was, it was what was determined the last time. So I think that was grandfathered in.
Yeah, just, so not random in a sense, but it certainly wasn't based on an analysis of making businesses whole, right? It wasn't a sort of like, we are going to, to cover all of your costs. In, in some sense, it, it was, if your cost exceeded $20,000. And so in that sense, I'm seeing like, for every business scenario, the, the, the amount didn't match that scenario. And so in that sense, I appreciate that, like, some thought and, and, and some analysis went behind that, that figure. But just, that, that's where I was coming from. But again, totally supportive of, if it is the case to, to Councilmember Mueller's point, that, that, that really it does need to be at that 20,000, then, then we'll, we'll get that signal. And I'll be more than willing to say that, because again, I, I want a successful project, I'll be more than willing to say that, that yes, then, then the, the right figure here is 20,000, because we're getting no buy-in at, at 10,000.
So just, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that the, the ones that we're seeing downtown cost about 40,000. I can't figure out how the heck they can cost that much, but I'm told that, you know, once you add up the, the heaters, the lights, the, the engineering that went into the thing. So that's, that's why it was that much. And I think as, I believe, Councilmember Mueller pointed out, we had so many people even pushing back on the 20,000 last time. But, you know, if we approve this now and then it gets reviewed again in three weeks, that's fine. I, I just don't want it to, what I, what I worry about is that this is approved now, nobody applies because it's not enough money, because everyone's struggling as it is. And then this goes through another month. And, and time is critical every week that, that this isn't done. I, I worry about making sure that it's built and ready for when they can, they can have people outdoors. So I, I sincerely understand what you're saying. I really do, because I would like to include more people on this. And in fact, I was going to come here tonight and suggest that we make it 140 instead of 100, because we all know it's not going to be, it's not going to cover all the people that apply for it. And honestly, if we're going to put up, if we're going to be really serious about this, we know it's not enough money. We know that really they need 20,000. And, and that isn't making them whole. That's, it's going to cost at least 30 for what they're doing. And we know it's going to be more. So I mean, I, I kind of see us, it's a good start. And, and that's fine. I'm, I'm happy to have the 10,000 to begin with. I just don't want us to draw it out longer than it needs to be. So if, 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 I, I was saying up to 10,000, because I thought that that would give the, the flexibility for the people that really need the 20,000 and the people that can get by with 10. But you're right, that makes it more fiddly. So if, if it makes everybody happy to vote on this and get this done at 10, that's fine. I, I just like giving the flexibility to Sam Seda to be able to react appropriately.
Mr. Piquegara? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like some additional clarification from council. So one of their two items in the staff report, one is authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with, with Sam Seda for the administration of this particular grant program, as well as provision of a $10,000 administrative fee to San Mateo Credit Union's community fund. I would ask that that be added to the motion if the, if the council so desires. I, and, and then the final question I would, I have relative to some of the amendments that have, how the program is structured currently. If, I'm a little confused about whether or not we're, whether or not, what are, what are the conditions for which we need to come back to council? Is it that the program is not subscribed? Is it that the program has, is undersubscribed? What, what is that criteria for us to come back to you and discuss increasing the, the grant amount?
Why don't you just come back in a month? That's how it's going.
What, Mr. Piquegara, can you repeat what you said?
Starting from where, Madam Mayor?
I'm starting both, well, not the beginning, but what's, what's going to, what's the trigger to bring you back to council, is what you're asking?
Yeah. So the question is, when do you, when does the council want to see this? Is it if the, if there is no subscription, if there is under subscription? Because I, I think one of the challenges we may have is, well, yes, I mean, what is the trigger? Do you want to, is it when the money is fully expended? When the money is not expended? When we've only had 20%, 50%, 70%, whatever it is? It would be helpful for me to understand when you expect to see this back, because we've deviated a little bit from what was originally contemplated.
Right. And so, and I think it would be, well, I'll ask you, is it too much to have a monthly update?
It's not the month, so I'm, I'm less concerned about the update, more concerned about how we administer a program if, if we have one applicant, let's say we have one applicant, because the $10,000 isn't enough. I, I would presume the council's asking us to come back in January to talk about increasing the grant amount. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Nash?
I'm sort of assuming that it's going to be obvious to you, if it's either not working or wildly successful, that you'll just want to come back?
Yeah, and I think what you're hearing from me is concern over the, to use a term that one of, that a council member has used before, the devil's really in the details. And I'm, I am personally uncomfortable with how this all sort of flushes out. I mean, we've gone from a less prescriptive to a very open program. And, but what we'll do, I mean, if the council, if that's the direction of the council, we will do our best to make it happen.
Councilmember Nash?
I'm just wondering how we make sure that we're in sync with everybody having the best intentions, but not having a lot, just hearing that Assistant City Manager Piquegara is uncomfortable, or is, well, uncomfortable with not having more pinned down. Is there anything that we could provide feedback for right now, given that there, we're not going to be as readily, presumably as readily available to convene? Is there anything that we could give feedback right now to help with that?
You, you know, I'm struggling with that. Otherwise, I would have attempted to offer that up to council. So what, what, what I understand the council's direction to be is that effectively, we, the guidance is that we hand over sort of the details of this particular program to Sam Seda for their faithful administration of the program. We will report back to council in January relative to the applications and whether there is additional demand or insufficient demand wherever we are, and we'll go from there. Is that?
That works for everyone. And then Judy doesn't have to come back a fourth time.
Could we have a reading of the motion again, though, please?
Most definitely. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller and a second by City Councilmember Carlton, to approve the outdoor dining grant program for up to $10,000 per business to include as many restaurants as possible, deemed as an essential construction, removal of the full kitchen requirement, not to distribute equally to the districts, but do understand the needs of each, preference to those who have not received previous grants, return to the city council with updates if little or no responses result to the grant in January 2021. Authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Sam Seda for administration of the program and approve the San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund request administrative fee of 10,000. Further questions?
Ju- ju- just for the record, if I could have authorization enter into agreement with both Sam Seda and San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund. And I believe that the motion needs to be amended, because it did not include those, those points.
Thank you, Mr. Piquegara. So with the amended motion authorizing the city manager to, manager to enter into agreements with Sam Seda and the San Mateo Credit Union. Any further city council questions or discussions? Seeing none by roll call votes, and Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
So the Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Then the Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items, however, a city council member, city staff member or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question. May request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. And at this time, Ms. Heron, we have three items. On informational, H1, H2, and H3. Can you take public comment on all three?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. At this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our informational items, H1, City Council Agenda Topics, H2. The CAFR and H3, Second Quarter Personnel Updates, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You may address the city council at this time. So final call for any public comment on items H1, H2, and H3. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any questions or comments from council on any of the information items or any of them you'd like to pull for discussion? H1, City Council Agenda Topics for December 2020 to February 2021. H2, Transmittal of the CAFR for as of June 30, 2020. And then H3, Second Quarter Personnel Update. Okay. We'll move on. The next item on the agenda is City City Managers' Report. To introduce this item is our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. I believe you're on mute.
There we go. Yes, all that to say no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, did you have your hand raised?
Just for, I was jumping the gun. I have my hand raised for council member reports.
Councilmember Carlton, did you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that we have a wonderful new business downtown, someone during the pandemic very bravely opened a business and. It's an electric bicycle store and he was planning on having a big. Opening, but because of the pandemic, he thought wiser of that. But he's a wonderful person. He's got Pedego bikes, which are beautiful, high-quality bikes, and I just wanted to let everyone know. If you're interested in one, you want to learn more about them, go buy a store. Where I've introduced him to the Pens of Clean Energy, who are doing grants for people buying electric bikes. And maybe we're talking about doing some co-marketing things together and just wanted to to. Make everyone aware of that and stick your head in the door and welcome him. While we still can. It, I think it's it's wonderful that we, in a time where it's very difficult that someone. Has the faith in our community to to join us at this point. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate that. And we have another business downtown, which is. I actually should know, and I don't remember the name of it, but it's a exercise. Store called 365 or, and it makes me think, but I also realize we've lost stacks. And so it actually would be somewhat interesting to perhaps with the economic development. Consultant or somehow to get a periodic update as to what. Is happening with businesses citywide.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I have two council member reports. The first being that the mayor and I were letting you guys know this evening that the mayor and I are bringing an item to you. For consideration in the very near future. Mayor Taylor, did you want to describe it or may I, or how would you like to do it?
Go right ahead, please. Thank you.
All right, so. We we both have individually met with Dr. Terry Givens, who is the former. Former Provost of Menlo College. She has put together with us a plan. That would around racial equity in the city that would create a stakeholder group in the city. Across multiple sectors and basically would, over a process of a seven-month time period, create a baseline. For the city in terms of establishing from that stakeholder group and feedback from the different sectors. Where we are and then so that we can create metrics around improvement. And then the stakeholder group would bring forward recommendations. And so that's something that will be brought to council for consideration in the near future, but wanted to alert you guys to that. The second issue is something. That wanted to to talk to you about and might actually save us from having a city council meeting tomorrow. There has been quite a bit of feedback from residents who were disappointed that we're not, we don't have holiday trees this year. Especially given that the lockdown is happening and people can't travel or go anywhere and see relatives. And other cities are moving forward with their holiday trees and have head lightings. And so last week I reached out to the city manager and asked her what the cost was. And to just do Fremont Park and do. And do it on that Harris, it's $40,000. And. The timeline is that that still can be, that still can be done. And those trees could be lit on December 13th, so pretty soon. And we could probably leave them lit a little longer this year, past New Year's to make up for that time. And because it's $40,000, it's something that's under the city manager's check writing capacity. So. If. There was not a vote this evening, but it in an indication that the city manager wasn't. Going to be have a upset council. This is something that Starla could do tomorrow, and we'd probably just have to go back at some point and figure out where to get budget for that. So wanted to check in with all with it with all of you about that, but very, I I. Just curious to hear your thoughts. We're not voting on it. But I am, I am supportive of of moving forward with that because I think right now it helps with the mental health. Of our residents who need, who I think this would support very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
I I thought the same thing, and I'm I'm in supportive of that, supportive of that. I think it it does help. That the mental health and cheer of of people in the city and. It's common in many places to leave the holiday lights up through Chinese New Year. I have to check and see when Chinese New Year is this year, but I think a little longer is is fine. I I I think that's. That's wonderful. And I and I have heard from residents that they're disappointed, so I think this is a good thing.
Councilmember Nash?
So I've also heard from, actually from a resident who was wanting to have the lights at the corner of Ravenswood and El Camino and was really missing those lights. And when I, at the time, checked with the city manager and we talked, I. Anyway, the decision what I relayed back was that we were not doing them this year. And because of the cost and the resident was. Very understanding and hoped for them next year. So I've. Which brings me to, I am not supportive of this strictly because of the funding. And I also think that the neighborhoods have really stepped it up. And are, I'm hearing of a lot of families who are putting up lights. And that blow up decorations and all because they're not, we're not doing it on a bigger scale. And I think that that's. A nice community. Feel and it doesn't. It saves the money for other more urgent things for the city.
I have a question. And I'm not even sure if I can ask it. So I'll ask Ms. Silver. So how far can we go into discussion on this since it's not agendized?
Thank you. So it really isn't agendized and so you can, I think that the request was for you all to just sort of. Have a brief discussion about it, voice some. Some opinions regarding it, and then the city manager will. Make a decision on her own, but the, you certainly can't vote on it or or make a decision this evening.
Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate it. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I I think I, like everyone else, have had a few residents reach out to me about about the absence of of the Christmas tree lights. I, and I so expressed for for budget reasons, we weren't doing it, but but it has been, I think, to Councilmember Mueller's point, a little, you know, sort of. Amusing to see in in my my Facebook feed, like lots of other cities lighting Christmas tree, tree lights. Who I know are for the most part similarly situated. I I think my concern is is that like I could, if if the idea was, and again, I know this is a more expensive undertaking, was saying like. Well, let's let's do lights on the the tree at the corner of El Camino and Ramos, but. I see that as a more central sort of location where really like the city, all of the city sees it and engages it. You you know, putting it at Fremont Park and Onana Harris, I mean, it really does make it sort of something that. Less members of the city and a less larger cross-section of the city see and engage in, and and that just, that that just is how how it is. And so that would be my concern, but then it goes back to the issue of like. When you open this up, when you go back and open up this, it does become a Pandora's box of of like, well. Who's to say that Oneta Harris and Fremont Park is a better solution over over the the El Camino location? Again, I'm I'm sure the El Camino location is is more expensive. It's it's a bigger tree, and I don't even know if it's doable. At this, at this, at this moment in time. But but for me, that that's the concern is is like, you know. The number of residents who are driving by or seeing or engaging or in Fremont Park at night to see it. Is 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 limited. And and certainly when it comes to Onana Harris, again, the number of residents or the cross-section of residents that are engaged in it is is again, is 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 limited. At the $40,000 cost. And so I think that that's if if there is, if if, you know, the city manager is sort of getting some support from. You know, at least three council members or some expression of support, then that's fine with me. I I mean, I I would, you know, again, it's not something I'm. I I'm passionate in opposing. And and I actually sort of slightly support, but but I do, again, like have that concern that that it is not going to be something. That lots of the residency and 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 so that I think that that's where I land.
Thank you. My questions are, do we own our own lights and can we do this in-house? Because I believe we've contracted out in the past and so, which is why the cost has been what it is. So those are my two questions for the city manager. Don't have to answer them now, but my concern is the cost. So if, do we own our own lights and can we do it in-house?
So I'll try and answer those. Nikki McGee might be better equipped to answer them. I do not believe we own our own lights and I do not believe we can do it in-house. I think there is a. A liability just because of the breadth and height of the trees, it can be very treacherous. And so the folks that we contract out to have the equipment to to perform the work. And Nikki, if you have more intel on that, please share that with the council. But just just for the record. I want you all to know, oh, and just with respect to the Ravenswood tree, when we checked with our vendor. The vendor was not evaluating his ability to add or do the Ravenswood trees in instead of the other position. So we'd have to reconfirm with him. His his timeline for getting those done. So this is not on the agenda tonight. We do have an agenda for tomorrow, an open session where council could talk about it if they would like to follow in the closed session.
Yeah. So I was trying to short circuit tomorrow, but if if you guys want to talk about tomorrow in a in a open meeting, we can do that. That's fine. We can, we can actually take a vote tomorrow. Would you guys prefer, I mean, would everyone prefer to actually vote tomorrow on it?
Vice Mayor Combs?
I mean, I'm a. I I would say I don't personally need a vote on it. I I don't know like where, I didn't follow closely enough. I think the discussion of where the tea leaves are. I I know that there there is. At least one council member opposing, one council member sort of on the fence, kind of leaning towards opposing. If it's clear that there there is, and and I think there is at least two council members supporting a third. I I'm not quite clear, but if there is that third, then then I say, I I don't know that it's needed for a discussion tomorrow. Be- because again, like, but but I don't, I don't know that there there is a. I'm not 100% certain that that there is the third vote, but if that third, you know, support is expressed tonight, then then I think I would be okay with with no. You know, not having to take this up an open, open session.
So I guess it's down to you, Mayor Taylor.
Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, actually. Sorry, sorry. I actually, if we are going to do it, I would like to take a vote, please.
So then we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, on that note, are there any other?
May I ask, though, what, just so I know if going into tomorrow, because if you're against it, there's probably no no reason for a meeting anyway, because there's. We have one person leaning against, one person against. If you're against it, we could save our time as well.
That's true, but I think as, I don't know who said. To have a vote on it. I just, the expense. There's a good point you brought up with the location. Ravenswood and El Camino would be the ideal place, more central in Menlo Park, and the timing of it. So I'm just thinking about those things there.
Well, if if there's not support, we can just say there's not support and not have it on the agenda. It's like anytime we we set something for the agenda, we have two council members who have support to agendize it. If there's not, if there's not three council members, we don't need to hear it tomorrow.
Well, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, any any option to not have another council meeting.
Okay, if you guys, I mean, my my thing, so there's two council members who'd like to have the hearing tomorrow. If there's not a third, then we don't need to do it. Is that where we're at?
That's where we're at.
Okay.
Okay, so we we will cancel the meeting tomorrow, correct? For the open session, we still have a closed session at 4 o'clock?
Yes.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, I think you and Councilmember Mueller are going to report out on the encampment subcommittee activities.
Yes, that we're trying to finish up council member reports. So thank you. That's what was going to be the the next item to talk about is just an update both for the subcommittee for the amenities list and for the. The Triangle Task Force. We met. Last Monday, I believe, with the entire group, all the stakeholders. And to come up with a date for. These phase two of the cleanup. And then we met, Councilmember Mueller and myself met with staff to decide what that date was. Now it's confirming that it works with Caltrans. So there's a potential cleanup coming in the first week of the new year, the second phase of it. In the interim, the. In the interim, the community-based organizations have been doing outreach anywhere from two to four times a week, and they have housed people. Right now, the number of folks living out on the marsh on Bayfront is less than 10. And so that was one of the reasons I asked the question about project, we hope, in life moves, because I know that they provide services there. So hopefully, with the size, a population of homeless, the size less than 10, that all of them can be housed prior to Phase Two of the cleanup. So that's the report out on the Triangle Task Force. And Councilmember Mueller, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't have anything more to add on that. I do, I do want to say, though, that I, on the holiday tree stuff, I do wish we had done it. And I, to be fair, like, if if asked, I am going to, I mean, we didn't vote this evening. But I think it's clear that there were two council members who supported moving forward and three didn't want to move forward. And I think that that is, but now, I think that's clear from the evening, so I want to just make that point. I don't have anything more on the triangle. I think we, I think we're in a good spot. I do, I do worry about where people being moved out are going to be housed, but I know we're trying to work that out with the nonprofits, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I mean, I'll sort of change up. I think to the point, maybe there is value, again, I don't want to have a wasted meeting, but 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 maybe there is value in in having the discussion. And, and, you know, again, it is something that has come up. Certainly, people in the community have have missed it. And maybe there is some value in in having a meeting and at least having having that that discussion. So so it is, I think, more more clear where where everyone stands. And and also, maybe, you know, just giving some time for 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 people to maybe sleep on this year. So I just, so I actually would be supportive of 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 having the discussion tomorrow.
Okay.
That's already scheduled.
Well, thank you all. I appreciate that. And I do think it's worthy of just thinking about, I don't, I don't want to, I'm not trying to press it if you all don't want to go there, but I appreciate it. So thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I would just state, it's, that's for restaurant grants.
And I'll just state that I think the mental health of our city right now, there's a lot of people in our city who actually are looking for some holiday cheer, who aren't going to see, like, I know myself, I'm not seeing family members for the first time in my life this year, who I usually see. There are a lot of people in the city who live alone. There are a lot of people in this city who have family members all over the, all over the country, and they're not going anywhere. There's a lot of people who are of older age, who have been living in fear that they're going to get this virus for nine months. And to give them the opportunity to go downtown and look at a tree and feel some community cheer, I mean, and that's what I'm hearing from people why they miss it. So that's.
Big discussion.
Yeah, and I think I was just, like, Councilmember Nash, I'm totally with you, like, right? But then I think as the parent of small kids, I'm also thinking like, well, if I wanted to take my kid to see a tree, I'd have to go to another city. Because, because, because our city doesn't have one, right? And there is that value there. But I mean, again, we'll have a discussion, but I think, you know, I'm totally there there with you, but but there are these other issues.
Are there any other report outs for subcommittee? Councilmember Nash, did you want to report out on the Subcommittee for Community Amenities?
I was actually just going to say the same thing for you. Mayor Taylor and I have been meeting with city manager Jerome Robinson and Assistant City Manager Pagaros about the, and actually, our attorney Carl Silver was involved as well about community amenities. We are just about ready to present something and get more feedback. And I, anything more to add? Mayor Taylor?
At this time, well, the revelation that I had at our last meeting is, from my own perspective, one of the challenges with the community amenities list is I see it as a way to mitigate, it's being used to mitigate bad land use policy, in my opinion. And so it's a struggle. And then you have to reach bonus level to get the community amenity, which is another struggle. And just some new information in light of SB 330, which, for me, further exacerbates the bad land use policy. So so that's all I have to say about it at the moment. And are there any other report outs? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any report outs? I'm only saying that because it is our last council meeting of the year to to report out. That's the only reason why I'm asking.
Maybe tomorrow. Um, no, I mentioned before the the coat drive. For those who are interested, leave your coat, put it in a bag, put it on top of your trash can. And the the person that picks up will bring it into the cab and will make sure it gets donated to a family who needs coats. Pensacola Energy is doing grants for people buying electric cars that got extended to people who are buying used electric cars because it was brought to our attention that not everybody, if if you need the grant, you're probably not buying a new electric car anyway. So we extended that out so that it could be used by more people who would want to buy a used e-car. And what else? I think that's it for now. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And if there aren't any other report outs, then this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.